Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission April 22nd, 2024 meeting. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on May 7th, 2024, at 10:30 a.m. And I always note that 10:30 is approximately time planning items come before the board. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. If you are an applicant or their agent, you do not need to fill out a speaker request form. First thing is roll call. I did have noticed that Karen and Kevin B. would not be here today, just for the record, which I was teasing around that that's we actually continue this meeting so Kevin Coon could be here and that's who made and seconded the motion. I don't know whether they don't like him or what. That was cute. That's a good point. All right, thank you. First item is approval of the April 8th, 2024 minutes of the Planning Commission. And we all had a chance to review those in our agenda packet, and if so, the Chair would entertain the motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the April 8th, 2024 minutes of the Pennington County Planning Commission. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve the overall agenda, which of course is your agenda packet. Chair would address a motion for that as well.
Slow move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted to you for this meeting of April 22nd, 2024. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. Good morning, Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Moll, our Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, Staff member, or Audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review, C U R 2110, for Hadley, Ibanez, and Kristen Brost to review a shared as a principal use in an agriculture district, and staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit, C U R 2110, with the applicant's concurrence. Item number five is Conditional Use Permit Review, C U R 2137, for Todd and Deborah Proctor to review a recreational vehicle to be lived in on the subject property less than 180 days per calendar year in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, C U R 2137, with conditions. Item number six is Conditional Use Permit Review, C U R 22-13, for Paul and Christie Scorsese to review living in a pole barn or shop building while living in a single-family residence in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, C U R 22-13, with conditions. Item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Review, C U R 22-44, for Rodney Alexander to review an accessory dwelling unit in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, C U R 22-44, with conditions. And finally, item eight is Conditional Use Permit Review, C U R 23-02, for Joseph Mexel to review living in an existing modular mobile home while building a single-family residence in an agriculture district, and staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit, C U R 23-02, with the applicant's concurrence as a single-family residence is habitable and the double-wide manufactured home has been removed from the property.
Thank you, Brittany. Any items that the staff would like to have pulled?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Any items the commission would like to have pulled? I'd like to have number seven pulled. Any items from the audience that would like someone would like to have pulled? Thank you. Mine is just a question, so I don't need you to introduce the entire number seven, which I got to flip to yet here. Let me get to the right, there we go. Christine, this one, when we looked at putting the mobile home on there was a number of years ago, and I brought up an item that there was a carport sitting there right on the road. We did the same thing when we put the Conditional Use Permit on, and again, nobody knew this carport existed, and I drive by it every day, so it's been there years. My biggest concern is, and it's the only one, I think we need to address that carport being there, and I am guessing that you're doing that in here. I saw a building permit. Is it going to be moved?
Good morning, Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner. Yes, we are actually in the process of getting it moved, and that is why he pulled the building permit.
Okay. I, the only question I have and would like to have because this property has been sitting there with the Conditional Use Permit use, and it hasn't been used. I'd like to have a condition that says in so many days this carport's going to be used. So, I mean, I really think it's important. I would say we ought to give them 90 days. I mean, I'm not trying to come down hard. I'm not against the submission here, but I, I think we, we need to add that.
Okay.
Is that something that you feel we could do? And word that way that it has to be moved at least to the property? It almost looks like it's on the roadway.
And he was in on Thursday, and he's actually in the process of working on it in the next couple of weeks, he said, so.
Okay. You wouldn't have any problem? All right, then I propose that we add a condition. I don't know where you want to put it. I'm not going to put a number. It would be 17 conditions on this thing. Yeah, that says 90 days the carport has to be moved from its present location and put on the property that's involved in this.
Yeah.
Can I get a second to that?
Second, you bet.
Moved and seconded to add a condition, additional condition, which would make 17 conditions for this item. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we do have to vote on C U R 22-44, and I would move that we approve it.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve C U R 22-44 per staff's recommendation with 17 conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number nine.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Item nine is Preliminary Plan, C O P P L 24-0006, to subdivide and create lots 1, 2, and 3 of Nebraska Placer MS 676 subdivision. The applicants are Lynn and Jody Jensen. Their agent is Advanced Design, and Janelle's in the audience if you have any questions for her. Location of the property is near the intersection of Rochford Road and Silver Creek Road. All of the property is currently zoned agriculture district. It is vacant. The access is off of Silver Creek Road and Rochford Road. There is special flood hazard area on the property. On February 29th of this year, staff did approve layout plan, C O P P, or C O L P L 24-0003. Conditions are on the screen. As you can see, those are all met. On the screen next is the proposed layout plan. You can see Lot 1, which is 5.12 acres in green, Lot 2, 7.17 acres in blue, and Lot 3, 6.73 acres in red. They're all currently vacant. Request was sent out for an interdepartmental review. County Highway and Registered Deeds both had comments which are included as conditions of approval. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is proposing to subdivide and create the subject property in order to create three lots, leaving a remaining balance. On March 19th of this year, the Board of Commissioners approved rezone 24-04 to rezone three properties to Ranchet District. The remaining balance of 64 acres will continue to be zoned agriculture district. With that, the applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval of preliminary plan, C O P P L 24-0006, with conditions.
Questions for Jason? I have one, Jason. I assume, in the way you wrote it, it's an assumption, an approved approach permit for proposed Lot 1 must be on file with the Highway Department prior to the issuance of a building permit. In the way these lots are laid out, 2 and 3 would be have one from the opposite direction, correct? In other words, 2 is one direction and 3 is the other, because the road goes right between the two, right?
Yeah, so Silver Creek Road for lots 2 and 3.
And those are approved already, or?
Those are Forest Service roads, or Silver Creek Road is a Forest Service road.
Oh, we don't have the say so.
So we'll require an approach permit for that. Lot 1, the Highway Department did have some specific comments. They wanted to know exactly where that approach is going to be, and they asked that to be identified.
What did they do with the Forest Service ones? Is that one where they still file a letter and say where they're going to put it, or do they just do it?
They just more or less do it. We do check with the Forest Service prior to the building permit.
To see that it meets their satisfaction?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason? Anyone from the audience that's here to speak on this item? Hearing any other discussion at all from the commission? Hearing none, all? Chair address a motion.
Move approval. Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve C O P P L 24-0006 per staff's recommendation with five Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 10.
Agenda item number 10, sorry. Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner. Agenda item number 10, Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0008, to allow a guest house on the subject property. The applicants are Matt and Paula Martin. The location is 13655 Highway 40. The current zoning is an agriculture district. There's no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria for the Planning Commission to consider in the review of Conditional Use Permit applications, and the Pennington County Planning and Zoning Section 318 lists 13 criteria that must be met to allow a guest house. These are displayed on the screen. The interdepartmental review, sorry. Had comments from the county onsite wastewater treatment system and the county addressing. Both of these are addressed as conditions of approval. For the analysis, staff performed a site visit on April 9th, 2024. The applicant is currently building a primary residence, which is 2,174 square feet, and the proposed guest house is 1,000 square feet. The primary dwelling shall be classified as owner occupied, and proof must be provided to the Planning Department. Staff has received no complaints regarding the applicant's request. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0008, with 12 conditions. And the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay. Questions for Christine? I've got one. And, and tell me whether I'm on line. Let's look at the rapid map picture. They use for a driveway, and where I picked up on this, this is a strange shaped piece of property. Actually, the piece of property on each end go to a road, but nothing in between. Do we have to have an access, a registered access agreement because they're crossing somebody else's property? I don't know. Maybe you know the answer. Thanks, Jason.
Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Yep, so when this lot was created, there is a 40-foot wide access easement that goes from Highway 40 to the subject property.
Okay, that's how that got there.
Correct.
Well, then you knew it already. I thought we have to have legal access to a piece of property before we can issue a building permit was where I was headed with it, and it just surprised me that the very tip of this property is the only ones by the road. You probably wouldn't even have room for an access. It actually goes down to such a tip. Each tip goes to the road, but nothing in between.
Right.
All right, that'll answer my question. Thank you. Any other questions for Christine? The applicant want to come up and go through anything? Well, there's always room for discussions. We'll see what happens. I'm sorry. Hearing none, the Chair would address a motion on item number 10.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept Conditional Use Permit, C O C U 24-0008.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation, C O C U 24-0008, and does have 12 conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 11.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 11 is Preliminary Plan, C O P P L 24-0005. It's to subdivide and create Lot A of Sam's Edition. The applicant and landowner is Charles and Jenny Hansen. The surveyor is Davis Engineering. Location of the property is 24025 Trixie Lane. Access is off Trixie Lane, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. A layout plan was approved for this. The conditions are in the staff report. The only condition that wasn't met was that eight-foot utility and minor drainage easements be included. That was made a condition. This was rather for an interdepartmental review. Registered deeds had some corrections that for the plant that need to be made. That was also made a condition of approval. The applicant's proposing to subdivide and create Lot A of Sam's Edition. On March 5th, 2024, the Board of Commissioners approved comprehensive plan amendment, C O C A 24-0001, to change the future land use from Ranchet to rural residential, and rezone C O R Z 24-0001, to rezone the property from agriculture to rural residential. Road improvements are not required, as Trixie Lane is a 24-foot wide gravel road. Staff has no issues with the request. This appears to be in harmony with existing lots and land uses in the area, so staff is recommending approval of preliminary plan, C O P, C O P P L 24-0005, with conditions.
Questions for Cody?
I've got one, and this is very small, I'm sure. Current zoning agriculture, but we've already changed it.
Correct. That's not effective until, um, it's a certain period after the Board of Commissioners meeting, so it's roughly around that this time right now that it will be effective.
Yeah, that's why I had my question. No problem. That's it.
Okay.
Move approval.
Go ahead, Deb.
Move approval with how many conditions, Cody?
There are seven.
Seven conditions, please.
Seven. Second. Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation, C O P P L 24-0005, with seven conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 12.
Item number 12 is Conditional Use Permit, C U 23-32. It's to allow a manager/creators residence on subject property. Applicant and landowner is St. Patrick LLC. Location of the property is 23021 High Seagull Road. Current zoning is commercial district with an existing land use of a restaurant. There is no special flood hazard area, and access is off High Seagull Road. This has been continued multiple times, so staff will kind of go through the staff report again, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page. So the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider to review a Conditional Use Permit application. It does appear that it meets all of those criteria, the requested use meets all of those On November 11th, or sorry, November 13th, 2023, the Planning Commission continued Conditional Use Permit, C U 23-32, to the December 11th, 2023 meeting, to allow staff time to write conditions to allow the applicant to bring the structure into compliance with fire code. Also, at that meeting, staff recommended denial, because we don't believe that caretaker's residence inside the structure meets the definition of a caretaker's residence. The definition says an accessory dwelling, so like a separate dwelling. However, the Planning Commission appeared that they were willing to work with the applicant, so they wanted us to adjust the conditions, but also they wanted the structure brought into compliance with the fire code. I believe that the fire code now has been, has been met. I believe they're just waiting on a part to finish it, but it is functional, I believe, Rich, this year, who can speak on that a lot better than I can. So with that, staff does still recommend to deny Conditional Use Permit, C U 23-32, as the request doesn't meet the Pennington County Planning zoning definition for a caretaker's residence. However, if the Planning Commission disagrees and approves the request, staff would recommend 12 conditions.
Thanks, Cody. Questions for Cody?
Cody? So on number four on page four, they do not have approval for South Dakota D E, D A, and are approving the onsite wastewater treatment system, and staff has not received any documentation that would show that the resident meets fire billing codes.
Oh, so, sorry. Staff reports get long when there's a lot of continuations. Staff does have documentation from the installer of the fire sprinkler system, and they are here, and they do have approval from D A and R. At the time of, at the time of October 13th meeting, when that staff report was written for that, they did not have that.
Okay. Other questions for Cody?
I just made a comment that I happened to go out and eat out there, and the sprinkler system, you know, looks phenomenal in there after they've got all their stuff hung up and it, every inch of that place is fire sprinkled.
Other questions for Cody? Cody, I'm going to go ahead and ask that the applicant come to update, just for the record, and then before you sit down, just to make sure everybody did get a copy. I was emailed, and I did make sure you guys got one from last meeting, but you do have the copy from Mr. Estes in regards to the system, and that he did do the reporting back to us that was we had required under our continuance. But I wanted to make sure, but I do believe for the record, we should have the applicant go through this. Thank you. Please introduce yourself for the record and go from there.
My name's Doyle Estes. I'm the owner of the St. Patrick LLC, which owns the property. I've had asked today Richard Broderick, who's the fire prevention fellow I hired to do it, so I'll let him explain to you what we've put in there.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself, Mr.
Good morning. Rich Broderick from Hydraulic Solutions Fire Protection. Mr. Estes hired us to put in the fire sprinkler system in, in this. Everything's done. Chip Premus, the city fire marshal, came out, must have been about two weeks ago, I suppose, Tuesday, to inspect it. We're just waiting on one part, but what he asked us to do is temporarily hook it up to the domestic water that's already coming in. There's a, a line that comes in, feeds the whole building, so we have a, a flow switch on that, so upon activation, there would be notification inside the structure. And then also, Mr. Estes asked us to monitor that system with a fire alarm system, so there's 24-hour monitoring via cellular signal, so it goes direct to dispatch. And then I met with Steve, who is the Johnson sighting chief, fire chief, and went over the system with him as well, so just to make sure that he didn't have any questions and so forth, and he was pretty excited that they were going to get early, early notification with that fire alarm panel on the thing, so. Otherwise, every time that we work on the system or we work on it, it will be back up and running at night, has been for about three weeks. If we add a part that's coming in, it, it's, it's just down during the day while we're there.
Explain to them what part we're waiting for.
Yeah, we're waiting on what, what Chip Premus asked us to do, and then the designers is, there wasn't quite enough water to meet some of the rules that Chip wanted, or what Chip wanted. So what he asked us to do is, is add a tank, a tank and pump, and we were able to do that in the entryway, because some of this is on a slab, and some of it's on a crawl space, so that we had enough weight to hold that water. So we're actually going to have two water sources, one coming from a tank and pump, which will have a separate flow switch, and one from the existing domestic water. So that's what it's going to do. It's kind of a, it's kind of a supplement to it. I don't know if you guys are familiar with a fire department connection, but it's where the fire truck hooks up on the outside of the building. In essence, that's what this tank and pump will be doing. It's just like a fire truck, but it's just sitting there waiting if it needs supplemental. And then we're also going to have a fire department connection. Steve asked if we put one on the building for Johnson sighting too, so there's potential for three water sources there.
Rich, please confirm that we have water in the commercial area sprinkled and in the lower level.
Yeah, the residence corridor was already done, using the, the current domestic water with, with a small line going to it. Now it's fed off of the commercial system from up top. So, yeah, everything in the main area upstairs and downstairs is all complete. It's really just waiting to hook up that tank and pump to the system.
Sure.
And I, it ships, I, I believe it ships out on the 28th. I didn't have a chance to look, but I believe it ships out on the 28th, so next week or something.
So Doyle, is there still three camping trailers on the property?
Please?
Is there still the three camping trailers on the property?
I think they are gone. They're gone.
They're not there.
They're gone.
Okay, that's the only complaint that was on here, sir.
Any other questions for Richard Doyle? I have one for each. Rich, and we never actually cleared this, the, the water source is private Sanders water system out there, is that?
Yeah, they have a, they have a separate water system out there.
Right.
Um, oh, I didn't even remember what it was called, but there's, there's a, there's a water tank up on top of the hill on the opposite side.
I think it's Sanders is the one that services that particular.
And that sounds, that sounds correct. I can't remember what the guy's name was.
Been there for a number of years.
Yeah, yeah.
They have a very good operating board and.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we did a flow test off of what's, what's there, just to see what we did, and we can get about three sprinklers to activate just off of, off of the current water that's there. We, we did kind of a, a test flow, because I wanted to know for my own good before I spoke on something.
Thank you. Then my next question, I actually have two for Doyle. One, thank you for keeping us updated as we had requested that from your continuance. Have you had a chance to review the 12 conditions that were included in this submission for the agenda?
Actually, I did not. When I had confirmed with Mr. Broderick that the sprinkler system was operational, it was my understanding that was the last thing I needed to get done, that we had this continuous to allow us to get that time. So in the law business, we call it race judicato. We've already tried the case. I thought maybe I misunderstood, but I thought it had been approved subject to us putting the sprinkler stuff in, so.
Just in reviewing them quickly, Doyle, I think you, you've done the building permit. There might be an address that's got to be added now to the, maybe Cody could fill us in here and make sure you're comfortable. I want to make sure the applicant's comfortable with the condition.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. There will be a building permit that would be required. This bottom portion was just done as a storage area.
Correct.
If it's finished space, it'd have to be permitted as finished space, but once the CUP is approved, 30 days from now, that building permit can be applied for. Other than that, those conditions are pretty much the standard conditions that we put into Conditional Use permits.
Yes, the, the address one is very, very common, and the notification of sale or transfer, that's very common. I just was, wanted to make sure, Mr. Estes, since we were dealing with a, a difference in opinion on wording, in the first place, that the commission decided, I just want to make sure these issues are all clear while we have the hearing going on.
Mr. Sack did email it this morning to me, so I make, I'll go back through the, let's make sure we do, we've met everything.
All right, thank you.
And, sorry, could I?
Go ahead, Cody.
So I, I believe you have met everything. Most of these are just like future conditions, that what the manager's residence can be used for, keeping the property free of junk and debris, not having RVs lived in on, on the site. So most of them are just what you, what you can't do in the future. Very good.
I think the most serious one would be that no other employees would be allowed to set up residence in there other than the manager and his family.
I understand.
Okay. Wouldn't you agree that's the most important one that we've, so. Any other questions for Mr. Estes or, or Rich while we've got them up here? Any other questions for Mr. Estes or, or Rich while we've got them up here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, it would appear to me that the applicants have done their thing. Uh, I would make a motion that we pass conditional use permit, CU twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Sir. Moved and seconded to, to approve um, with staff's um. Well, when I say uh, conditional concurrence. Uh, of twelve conditions. Um. Discussion from the audience. Discussion from the commission. I'm gonna weigh in here. I, I'm comfortable with this. Uh, I've done a lot of building and I'm telling you, when they fire sprinkled these things and it's done appropriately. Uh, as this owner and, and this installer has done. Uh. It's quite a thing for out in the, the toolies, so to speak, to have fire suppression. So. I, I see it as a positive thing and I see the applicant has tried to maintain what we requested of him to maintain to continue this as we went along. Any other? Thank you. On the favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. On to item number thirteen.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item thirteen is conditional use permit, CO CU twenty-four dash zero zero ten. Uh, the applicant, it's to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is R, RFL Holdings LLC, Ryan Remington. Uh, he is in the audience if there are any questions. Location of the property is six five one seven South Canyon Road. It involves point seven eight acres. Uh, existing, our current zoning is agriculture district and suburban residential district. Uh, existing land use is residential, a single family residence. Access is off South Canyon Road and there is a hundred year flood plain on the property. Uh, the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in the review of a conditional use permit application. Those answers are on the screen. It does appear that uh, the request does meet all of those criteria. Uh, currently on the property, there's a single family residence that was built in nineteen thirty-four. A twenty-four by twenty-four detached garage that was built in nineteen seventy and a deck addition that was built in two thousand and six. Uh, there is an onsite wastewater treatment system uh, through the city of Rapid City that has been approved. Uh, the applicant did obtain a variance on February sixth, twenty twenty-four. The Board of Commissioners approved variance, CO VA twenty-four dash zero 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 one. Uh, to allow a, a vacation home rental on a lot size under one acre. Uh, this was right around for interdepartmental review. Uh, the city of Rapid City uh, came back for their, for their onsite wastewater treatment system and said, per D A and R, the existing system can continue to be used since there's no known issues. And we do not know the size of the drain field. Um, we do know the size of the drain field, so staff uh, reached out to the, to the city to see if that would change their answer. Um, if anything would be required and the city is still fine with the, with the septic system. On December sixth, twenty twenty-three, uh, county violation, CO VO twenty-three dash zero one four one was opened on the property for operating a V H R without a conditional use permit. Uh, the applicant stopped taking reservations and began the process to come into compliance. Approval of the CUP would allow the applicant to continue to rent the property as a vacation home rental. Um, as a requirement in the conditional use permit application, the applicant was required to determine the septic system size. Uh, it is designed for three bedrooms. However, the house is four bedrooms. Uh, the city of Rapid City um, and South Dakota D A and R have determined the system still can be used and it doesn't need to be upgraded. Um, however, staff has limited the overnight guests based on the size of the septic to six, um, for three bedrooms. If the applicant wants uh, to use that fourth bedroom or to um. Advertise for eight people, you'd have to upgrade a septic system. Uh, so with that, staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit, CO CU twenty-four dash zero zero ten with conditions.
Questions for Cody?
Cody, why do you have twelve people per maximum daytime?
Uh, cause the zoning ordinance allows the maximum daytime occupancy to be double of the overnight occupancy.
Okay, because of the septic? Is there a reason or that's just what you decided?
Uh, I'm not sure why that's in the ordinance. Um, I'd have to research that. I don't know if anybody else, Brittany could speak to it.
Been, I can answer. It's been in the ordinance all three times the ordinance has been amended.
Yeah, just wondering because like if they have a family reunion or something like that, we don't do that to anybody else's. Properties, you know, saying only twelve per day at your house, twelve per day if you rent it. Twelve per day at a, I don't know. Motel, did they limit and say how many people can be at the motel room at, during the day? Um, that's my.
However, there is a limit to how many before it becomes an event that you do have to get a conditional use permit.
Right. What do you mean? What event?
Means that if you're putting on an event separate that draws in a lot of people, you still have to get a conditional use permit for that. We don't expect the celebration of a private such a thing as a wedding and whatnot, but we've actually had weddings get them, haven't we?
Uh, yeah, there's a, a, um, a section of the zoning ordinance for uh, temporary gatherings.
Correct.
That people have to get things.
So if they had more, they had fourteen people at a vacation home rental, then that would be a, they'd have to go get a gathering?
No, that, that number's higher. I don't know what, what it is off the top of my head. That twelve comes from. The, the zoning ordinance specifically states that the daytime occupancy can be double of what the overnight occupancy is.
And how about the state? Do they limit them? How many people could be there during the day?
I'm not sure on that.
Yeah, I guess that's my concern is.
Cody, theoretically, they do limit them because they look at that in their review of the septic system.
Correct, and there is. When you get into a lot of people staying in, in a spot, you get kicked into like either like a specialty resort, um, different things like that.
Not staying, Cody, just visiting. Like if, if there was four bedrooms, even if there was four people, but fourteen people came. Five, eight kids and then whatever adults, um, we say. They could be turned in for violating the um, vacation home rental. You see what I'm saying? I was just wondering why we put twelve.
Because that's what the ordinance says.
I know it says that. I just wondered if the state.
I could only, I could only do what the ordinance says.
I, I guess I was just wondering if we had a specific besides, okay, that's what we put in the ordinance.
My, without, I wasn't a part of any of, really of the. First few vacation home rentals, but my guess would be is it would have something to do with the size of the septic for the, for the state as well and how it's calculated. I'm guessing daytime visitors is calculated differently than actual guests.
Just, just a question. I'm not gonna die on it. I'm just wondering why.
Cody's way in here. We've done this on a number of things. So we've done it on religious gatherings. Uh, this isn't a one and only that we've limited the daytime. Uh, because we do have a, a one that we reviewed in here the last few times yearly. We have a religious gathering going on a, a person's house on a dead end road. It's reviewed because there is a number of conditions that require and limit the number of people that can be there.
Correct.
Uh, we have a number of other conditional use permits that do. Uh, what would I say? Do what you said, limit the number of daytime people that can be there besides those that. Uh, are using it, directly using it or live there.
Or an event, not a.
Right. Not necessarily even an event, other things.
I'm just saying, if you had a, just if you had your family or whatever come. And then we'd say, well, only six can go. You guys need to go to a special resort or somewhere else to have a gathering. So.
But you said there is a provision that if they wanted to have twenty family members, they can come and do a, is it a? Condition.
Yeah, if they, if they upgraded their, their septic, their number, their, their number of, yes.
Just on one time saying that they're, hey, we're having a.
Yeah, and at that point, like if they came in for a conditional use permit, like um, the CP that Charlie's referring to for the, there's a church camp. Um, that.
Only goes on for a weekend.
Yep, that uh, the number of people who are, are limited by what their septic can. Ha- handle. It's just, it's calculated differently. If you look to stay reg, there's a list of calculations for different things.
Well, that's what I was wondering. If it was just a gathering for a day or two, is there's, is there septic big enough to be able to take it? And number two, um, what should that limit be? So. Cause a lot of times commercials use less than, yeah, unless they have porta potties or something.
I think it was also that um, people in the zoning as well as those in the vacation home rentals is to, has to do with a. Uh, protection of adjacent property owners too. For, I mean, you can't open the door totally and allow everybody come. You've got parking problems. You have a number of related problems that are zoning issues.
Yeah, but that happens. If you go into a normal housing unit, that happens where they have the. They'll take out all the parking spots on the street for a day. So, I mean.
But we don't have parking on county roads.
What's that?
Legally, we're not, people that are using their property do not get to park on county roads.
Not the roads, but the right of ways they can.
In the county. In the city, they do. There's designated parking places, but our parking places are designated on the property.
But they'll use right of ways in the county.
Huh?
I see them use right of ways in the county for parking all the time.
I know, but I'm saying legally, that's not really a.
But Charlie, legally, you're not supposed to park your campers, your RVs or anything on the street and you see Rapid City.
No.
Just saying.
How do they deal with like an auction? A one day event where some auctions have four hundred people.
My knowledge, I've never seen an event thing for an auction. I have seen it for other things, but in the twenty years I've been around the planning, I've never seen it for an auction. Have you, Cody? The question, auction?
How do they deal with auctions? Let's say they have four hundred people there.
Uh, so for the, for the, that temporary ordinance, it's more than three days and twenty-five people, I believe.
Okay.
That's what it is.
That's probably where the auction would fall into then.
And, and I, and I, I believe Commissioner Hancock's concern would be better addressed on the vacation home rental ordinance side. Then, than this, because currently I can only let them have twelve based off of our ordinance.
I'm just saying, right of ways usually used in city or county when there's not no parking.
Just one more thing to support what you were saying. We do have a number of conditional use permits and I don't, I can't remember them right off the top of my head. Where we have had people have to provide porta potties at a, at a certain number above the use of their own private septic.
Correct, yes.
I remember a number of them that have had those rules. So that's a protection too that's built in.
Yeah, and actually the one that you were referring to for the church camp.
Yeah, that was a church camp.
That's that, I believe there's. I, i- it's hard to get a septic for, you know, I think that one allows fifty or sixty people. Um, so then whatever their septic can handle, you take um, you, one porta potty for fifty people.
Right.
So if your septic can handle twenty people and you have fifty people there, you have to get one additional border.
Well, it's a health and safety issue too. The, the uh. Versus what septic system they have, they may in fact over um, require it, you know? It may be get in a situation where it's in jeopardy. Any other questions for Cody?
I just heard you say something, so I look.
There's a six-year rotation for uh, the county septic tank inspection. How's the city doing? I see the city's in on this one.
Yeah, so the, the, the city does six. Uh, the county actually moved to um. It's only required at, at certain points if you, uh, at the sale or transfer of the property and add a building permit. Uh, if you're adding finished space or bedrooms, then it, it takes a, you have to get your system pumped. Um, unless you've been within six years. So if, if you've pumped within six years, we honor that still. Um, but you're not required to pump every six years now. It's just when those two criteria happens. Um, I believe the city's still on a six-year rotation. I don't think they changed theirs.
So who, who's in charge in that case like that if you don't come to the right?
The city.
The city would.
It's, it's in the city's one mile, so they're responsible for the, the septic.
I've got one. It's actually two, but it's combined. We, in this particular one. Um, our sales tax license again is in the. Uh, name of the Black Hills Vacation Rentals, which is the contact. And in the new ordinance you're proposing, you have that covered. In the old ordinance, it's still owners. However, in the new ordinance. You also, um, the Department of Health report has to be in the owner's name. And I don't know what the, I didn't look up the old one. You know what that is, Cody, whether that. And I didn't see a Department of Health certificate in this one. Maybe it's not been issued yet.
I don't believe that we've had um. Have anything that specifically states it has to be in the owner's name for a health license. I'd have to look at that. Um, I do know that the applicant is involved with the health department and um.
You do have that in your new one, it says owner.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but part of the, for him to get the variance, the board was concerned about him having his. Uh, Department of Health license. So he did supply um, the stuff that he has from the state for the Department of Health.
Okay.
For that license.
But I don't have any problem. I realize there's a fine line between who's collecting the sales taxes. And then who becomes responsible to submit it under what name. But I just wanted to point out, we do have another one here. And, and I'm not gonna vote against it because it's not exactly with the wording of the old one. But we, we've gotta get these things together so that our rules read what we see before us in the agenda. That's all my interest is.
Chair.
Thank you.
So it says a copy of vacation home rental license or application from South Dakota Department of Health at the time of the issuance of the vacation home rental license from the South Dakota. Department of Health, a copy of the license shall be furnished to the planning department. If you look at vacation home rental checklist and supplement application.
Yeah, but I didn't have any problem with that. I had a problem with whose name it's in. In other words, if it's in the name of Black Hills. Uh, vacation rentals is one thing. If it's in the name of the owner, which is RFL Holdings, that's another.
I don't think, for me, it's, it's that. It's making sure that there's a local contact. And the local contact. If they, if this company or whoever this is applied for it, they had to apply for this permit. And then the contact, you guys wanted local, so they put a local contact down. So the local contact is Adam Perrigo. So for me, um. They followed through with all their lines and what they were supposed to do. Um, just like my motel, you want a local contact or you want one of us, so you could call me at any time in case something happens at the motel. That's all I'm worried about is that they follow through with all the process. And then Adam's gonna make sure all these things are done with health and everything, safety, welfare of the people. So. Um, we do it all the time.
Deb, all I was pointing out is our ordinance reads one thing. Sometimes we do another. Secondly. I've dealt with people that you thought were gonna be just fine to work with and you didn't, it didn't work out and we replaced them. And now we have documents that we're operating under that are in their name. Do we call them back in for review and charge them? So, these are the situations that I'm saying we can clean up now when we're approving this. Rather than just saying, okay, this is fine. I think it'll work fine to have a contact.
Well, you'll have LLCs, so your LLC is not gonna be the same as your name on there, as your contact.
It can be.
Doesn't have to be. I can own many properties.
The LLC, uh, the LLC will have a managing partner or owners and those will be the same names. That's, I brought that up before.
I think if I have a manager that manages my properties and I have an LLC, you said local contact, I think we're getting a little picky. I want someone as that contact and if that contact person cannot take care of.
Then can I ask you a couple of questions instead of Cody?
Then a conditional use permit should be taken away if that contact is not going to do their job.
Can I ask you a couple of questions instead of Cody? All right, the local contact in this one, I have no problems with them. I have no problems with them having the sales tax license when they, when our own department is moving in the direction of having a designate as well. Because it depends on who collects it. But let's say they end up parting uh. RFL Holdings or Ryan Remington, whichever one you wanna use, parts company with them. Now, are we gonna charge them another hundred dollars because they then would generate a review? They no longer have a sales tax license.
What do you mean?
They just got rid of Mr. Perrigo. I said they got rid of him.
They got rid of him?
Yeah, I'm just saying, what if they got rid of him and are we going to call them in and review this again?
Oh, you're gonna call whoever calls Adam Perrigo and nobody answers, then you're gonna call like you would in one else.
I said if they'd quit doing business with them, they were unhappy.
So if the local contact changes, they, per our ordinance, they have to come back in here for review.
They do. So that would also cover the, the health license as well.
What's your other question, Charlie?
So we're gonna charge them a hundred dollars if it's, that's what you're saying for a review?
If their, if their local contact changes.
That what it is right now, Cody?
If their local contact changes, yep. It, in our ordinance, it requires uh, notifications be sent out uh, to the property owners and a review by the planning commission.
And I'm using. And I'm using as example, you would assume that the people, if, if it's not in their name, it's gonna be in their local contact name, but.
And if someone doesn't answer, if Adam doesn't answer, and I'm the neighbor and he doesn't answer and he do, and there's issues and he doesn't keep answering, I'm gonna go tell to review their conditional use permit. That easy.
That isn't what I'm arguing about, Deb. I'm arguing about the specifics. When we write an ordinance, do we follow what we put in the ordinance?
He just said yes.
Well, not exactly. He said, we do have require review, and that's what I was asking. Do you think that's right?
Yes. I think you're picking things apart when people are trying to have a business, Charlie.
People sue each other over picking things apart. Yeah, then if we pass these things and they're not correct.
Charlie, they sue over anything.
We're setting it up for more problems.
I don't think so. I think when you start picking, that's when you start suing.
Following the wording of an ordinance is not picking. I didn't decide to do that.
Which we are. He just said that, you know, if they change or something happens.
We're not following the ordinance we have now. That's what I was saying. The sales tax license is included in the new one as a designate. The old one, it says owners. It does not say designate.
And I don't agree with that.
But that's what's in effect.
Not in effect. If you have an LLC and then you put a manager in.
I might not agree with it either, but I've got an obligation to perform my duty of administering the ordinances of the county.
Move on, Charlie.
Cody, anything else? Just to make it clear for the record, I don't have a problem with the sales tax. I haven't had it in the past either. But again, if we're not, or it takes a while to get the other one, we are operating out of that. The health license, I did not know, but I knew it would generate a, uh, review, which I, you know, I kinda question over a name. But any con- contact generates a new review.
Any change in the local contact or transfer of the property?
In the new one too? I don't remember that right now.
I don't know if it's in the new one or not. I don't believe so.
Okay, then my point is, is very important then, because now you can get rid of somebody and you're not gonna know, you could get rid of your sales tax license and your health department person and not have the right name on either. So I'll just voice my concern. That's, that's, we should do something in the new one to, to cover that and get that corrected.
I think that's, I think that's on the next agenda item.
I'm just going out, I'm gonna look the other way, as Deb would say, let's move on. I'm gonna, I, I have looked the other way, but I can, I don't think we can keep going on in this. Where do you end? What ordinance do you end with that you say, we're not gonna force that, that you just find the way that whatever they're doing?
When do we have too much government overreach on stuff that we don't do on everything? You can't pick every business apart, Charlie. We can find stuff, more stuff, more stuff, more stuff if we pick businesses apart. I'm okay with vacation home rentals and some of the stuff we do for health, safety, and welfare, but past that, you're just picking. That's my opinion.
I don't think I'd need a lecture from, from you, Deb, on it. I'm sorry.
Well, you're giving me one, Charlie, today, so I appreciate it and I do like you very much, but you're giving me one too.
But I'm not wrong on what I'm pointing out here, Deb. I'm not wrong on it. Yes, we do have a lot of government oversight and I agree with you, and I don't agree with all of it either.
Yeah. Let's move on, Charlie.
That doesn't make me a good person or a bad person. I'm trying to do what I raised my hand and said I would do.
Charlie, I never said you're good or bad just because we don't agree. You're a good commissioner, sir.
Good.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, it, it looks like we've got like four names for different things.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Adam Perrigo is the first one on the vacation home checklist. Then you go to the onsite water. The owner there is a different name. The owner, the LLC and the DOR is a different name. But I, I can see that, how some of those happen. But again, if they have to come in once, one of them changes, I guess, that's, kinda solves the problem to a certain extent.
Thank you. Move approval of number thirteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second to approve first staff's recommendation, CO CU twenty-four dash zero zero one zero with sixteen conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Yep, we're ready.
So the next item is the vacation home rental ordinance. Uh, this was continued from the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting. So, um, I guess if you want to go through it page by page and suggest changes, um, address some of the concerns from the last planning commission meeting, some of the public comments. Um, we can just work through it page by page and discuss and make changes or propose changes.
What do you like to do, Brittany?
That would be easiest first step.
Then we'll do what you request.
Let you lead and I'll make changes.
Huh? Oh, you're gonna do what?
I said I'll let you lead and then I'll make changes as you guys make decisions.
We're gonna go through it item by item, page by page.
I'd just say bring up the ones that are, the planning commissioners have concerns with instead of ba- page by page. Unless the whole page you guys have issues, I'd go page one. Anybody have any issues with changes on that? Page two.
Okay.
I don't think you have to read through the whole thing, just go by page.
Why don't you make that a motion, second?
That'd be my motion.
Move to second and to, uh, review, uh, it'd be item number fourteen, uh, section three nineteen vacation home rentals. Is that adequate? Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carried. I'm reading. Number one, do you want, I, I don't assume you want me to read it though.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll make a couple of comments on it. You know, I, I really do like the looks of this more as an operator agreement than what we had it as an administrative thing where we were kinda getting our fingers into a lot of things. The only spot that I really have some questions on is section E.
E.
Um, and I still.
He's on the second page?
This would be on the third page.
Kevin, we're gonna go page, we're on number page one.
We're just doing page right.
By motion, we gotta go page by page. So be on the first page.
Sorry.
Anybody have any? I just had one that I highlighted, VHRs are allowed in units located in apartments, condominiums, and other family dwellings. Had we had them in apartments before, Cody?
Uh, Chris, second for everybody, no, we ha- we haven't. Uh, but that was one of the, um, concerns from the, the board of commissioners, where when you get like a multifamily dwelling or you get, uh, you know, like a fourplex, the, the old ordinance said you had to rent it out in its entirety, uh, but the board of commissioners didn't wanna limit it to just one or, or the whole thing.
What page is that on?
First page.
On the first page.
It's under number two, three, two, multifamily apartments.
So it's D three, two.
There. You see it? On page two?
Oh, the page might be different in the book. I'm, I'm actually looking at the one that you gave me separate. Sorry.
Okay.
I'm on the wrong page.
Six, the first one.
Okay.
Seven is the first page?
Six.
Six, okay.
All right, we'll do it that way. I'm sorry. I apologize because it all fits on a very simple.
No, sorry about that. Charlie, I was on the wrong page too.
All right. So let's go back to page six, ten.
Okay.
I didn't have anything circled, I don't think, on that. Okay. You wanna go on then to, uh, seven, ten? All right. We're on seven, ten now.
Sorry, I just have one comment on six. Um, just on the definition of vacation home rental. Um, if you want it to be in the apartment, so it kinda goes back to segues to six and seven, um, it should say any home, cabin, or similar unit that is rented. Otherwise, you're gonna assume that it has to be in its entirety, so the whole apartment building would have to be rented.
I'll make that motion.
Explain it one more time before, so we get the wording right, Brittany. What would you desire the wording depending on the direction?
It has to be indicative of some kind of unit because not, the whole apartment complex wouldn't be rented. Because if you say building, then it would assume that the whole apartment building would have to be a vacation home rental and all of the units in it. And ultimately, that would be a hotel, um, a vacation home rental. Um, so to kinda distinguish between the two. So if you wanted an individual unit in a building or a multifamily, you would have to make sure that the definition matches that. So just keep that in mind when you go back and forth between.
When we're over on three, my question originally, okay.
So just keep that in mind.
I'm gonna put a mark by that.
Don't have to make a motion to it, change it.
Not right now, it, what she's, I assume you're saying is it somewhat depends on what we come up with as a, um, a consensus on, uh, item, uh, three, uh, what is it? B? Two. Item A two, yeah, A two. And we're not to that yet. That's what you're saying. So she's just combating that we gotta clean up, go back if we change that. Go ahead. We're on, then any others for six, ten?
Uh, I was just gonna, on that, that was number three on definitions.
Yes.
Um, what about just replacing it with living space instead of similar, instead of building? Because that's what an apartment in a building would be. Clearly, you don't wanna run out the entire, or obligate people to rent out the entire apartment building, but if people are renting out an apartment as a VHR in a building, then that would be living space, but not necessarily a building.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if we don't change the way three A two is written, we don't need to correct your number three, right? It fits.
Right, but if you read the definition, it would in.
Correct. If we change three A two, then we might have to change the wording to your number three on six, ten. C three.
You would have to, the definition would have to match if you want to allow it in multifamily.
You know, see what we're saying, Jim? We haven't even, if we don't change on my, what I had highlighted, for instance, I had highlighted three A two. If we don't change that, then number three on six, ten is written, it will cover.
Yeah, okay.
So can we leave that for now and move on to seven, ten then? We'll see. We may have to change the wording on. I don't know. Seven, ten.
Okay, uh, one of my concerns, and I've voiced it before, no signs.
Signs?
If somebody lives next door, I think they, they should be afforded the courtesy of knowing that somebody's gonna put in a vacation home rental. I know it's a hassle, but gosh, I hate to wake up one day and find out that, jeez, we're a vacation home rental and we didn't know it. I think it's, it's something that should be done.
Okay. Anything else on seven, ten? I had the one then, since nobody's volunteering yet. Mine would be three A, number two, apartments. My question was apartments. I don't believe we allow them in apartments right now. We do not.
We do not.
So we are adding that now. I'm not, what's the board's feeling on it?
So if, if you had a ten-unit apartment, you could have one unit as a vacation home rental? Yeah.
Yeah.
Boy, that looks like a, I don't know.
They do that in cities, you know?
Yeah.
City has it all over.
Do they?
City has it all over, yeah.
Okay.
And rooms.
Shows you how far behind a curve I am.
Yeah.
All I'll put in there is that I've sat on every committee and apartments were always excluded. I think it's wise.
I don't think we're gonna have much objection if we exclude them.
Hmm. I'm not gonna speak for the rest. This has always been such a sensitive issue. I wouldn't wanna speak for anybody on vacation home rental.
Well, as Jim mentioned, that, yes, they are in municipal areas.
Yeah.
Um, just full apartment complexes, eight-plexes that have vacation.
I've stayed in them, you know, in a big building where you have a vacation home rental, you know?
You have any density requirements?
I don't know.
You can have as many as you want.
I don't know why not. I mean, if you've got forty units, uh, you ought to be able to rent, I suppose in theory, the whole thing out. But it's an independent, uh, decision and operation in each case. You know, I think in cities where, you know, the guy, somebody owns an apartment and they go spend the weekend with their girlfriend and they rent out their apartment or vice versa, and I think that's pretty common, but I, I don't think that in the absence of that, we're going to get probably an outcry of people saying, oh my gosh, we're, we're depriving people of an opportunity here, but.
But they're very common like in Florida. You know, their condos are always rented out as vacation.
Yeah, yeah, condo or what's the other thing?
Colorado, and even in Rapid City. You know, I'm aware of a few of those out there that are apartment complexes, but they're renting out the whole thing. The only, the difference comes when, again, the difference between, um, a hotel and an apartment complex typically is size, that you have a full living room, dining room, some of that stuff in an apartment that you don't have in a motel. Um, but yeah, I know that there's some full units in Rapid City that are vacation home rentals that rent the whole thing out as a daily rental.
I've got two things. One, condominiums, and you have, most condominium setups have a homeowners association type of covenant. We're automatically walking in then to more covenant problems about the people that viewed commercial versus domestic use. And the court decision that had involved, once we opened that door. So now we're going to throw apartments and condominiums in that. The second thing is, how do you decide who, if we have four units, you know, how many of them are gonna be vacation home rentals? And if there's one, who gets the one? The first one? I don't know. I'm saying it does create some other review procedures.
And that's an owner's headache that they have to deal with, you know?
Yeah, I, I think the reality is where we are, it probably wouldn't make any difference if we didn't encourage this, but it may come up. I mean, and, you know, the more urban you get, the more pressure there's gonna be for people to say, is if you wanna rent a VHR in New York City, you rent an apartment. You know, I mean, you can't, you're not gonna get a suburban home. And so, um, in, in time, that may be an element. I, I, I don't wanna make an issue out of it.
Neither do I, but otherwise, they'll think I'm picking, but if you got a fourplex, that's usually, I'll be specific, a fourplex. No, because this is a tough one. What I'm saying is, where do you get, do, do you let three or four? Do you, where do you stop vacation home rentals?
That was my concern. Yeah, I agree.
I don't know. What does the staff think of that?
Why do you wanna stop them?
Well, because we're gonna get all four and then we've actually moved into another zoning type of category, right? You have a fourplex and all four, does that become vacation rentals?
And? Something wrong with that?
Wouldn't change?
No.
Anything?
Go ahead.
It's multifamily.
Help me.
We have that situation already in Rockville with the fourplexes being allowed to be vacation home rentals.
In Rapid?
In Rockville.
In Rockville?
Yeah. We approved it.
Yep, it was part of the PUD and it was approved. Mr. Hall was here and just talked about that.
He has commercial, multifamily, everything in one.
He has residential, he has some units, but it's up to the HOA, so he has designated some.
No owner, operators, or anybody living there then?
Well, he has designated it as part of his HOA and as part of his condo units, that some of the units will be allowed to be vacation home rentals and some will be private residences. But he has done that in his own, through his own HOA and not part of our ordinance. But it is part of the PUD that he is allowed to have those. And he can have all four of them be. And he can have all four of them be vacation home rentals in one unit if he wants to, it isn't restricted the way.
The nice thing about apartments and stuff, um, if the vacation home rental's a problem, you could just move into a different apartment or three things down the, whatever, so I don't. Most of the time, um, you're gonna see that they keep them better than the, the rentals, leases. Because they won't be able to rent them if they're gross.
Somebody could actually take a piece of property, in other words, and develop it into a vacation home rental, four-plex. I wanna stick with four-plex because it's an easy number.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Brittany, is that additional language that we had before in apartments?
On that number two?
Yeah.
Because prior, it was, it had to be rented in its entirety. So if it was a multifamily, it had to be rented in its entirety to one family. That's currently the way it's written. Um, during the first go-around, um, with the ordinance, there was a lot of discussion from the public about that, about, um, if people have condo units or townhomes and being able to rent those. So there was a lot of discussion about that. Or having, living in one unit and renting out another unit short-term or long-term, or not having to differentiate between the two. So that's why it was put in there. Uh, typically, in an apartment complex, if it becomes a thing where every unit is rented, essentially that becomes a hotel, um, which requires a different permit. It doesn't mean that it's not allowed, it just is a different process.
Right.
You know, an example that I would think of is like Sandstone Ridge. I'm not familiar if they have any vacation home rentals in that, but that would be a typical condominium-type apartment-type homeowner.
They don't allow.
But they're all rented, in, I mean, they're all owned individually. You know, it isn't like one, one corporation owns it, they're all owned individually.
And, and I don't know any of their covenants that, that they maybe don't allow that, but that would be, that would be more like a typical place.
Given I am, it's twenty-eight days, you have to, they can, it has to meet the twenty-eight day requirement.
Okay.
But they also have an apartment that they rent, um, through their guests. In other words, uh,
Like a vacation home rental?
If I sign up for it, I can have it for a week without a town friends, that sort of thing, but they have one. The remainder of them only can be rented, uh, on a month-to-month basis. No longer than six months, is what they're using. Anything else on page seven, ten? Since I went and read this other one, I gotta flip back to six. I guess number six, the only thing I would say is I would make it match number seven. So the same thing that I was talking about doesn't come up. Number six says the owner must submit a current. I would have it so that they also could have it under a designee's name.
Are we on page eight, Charlie?
When, seven, ten, or seven, which one page were you on?
Yeah, we're, it's on number six, it's the, oh, I guess it didn't go, it goes E, alright, sorry.
Are you on page?
Which page are you on then?
What page?
Yeah, I saw the number, I flipped to the number and went back to where I had done my markings, so I got the wrong one, go ahead.
So you're on eight, ten?
We are, if we are done with seven, ten, we're on eight, ten, and then I'll bring up my, thank you.
Okay.
I have a couple of issues on, um, E two, and it, you know, it's not a real heartburn for me, but again, we talked before about all ages counting towards the number of people. It, it just seems to me like, you know, whether the age is one or two, that they should get a pass or at least a half a person or something like that. They're not gonna be huge users of a shower, they're not gonna be huge users of a toilet.
So, uh, Cozak, Vermonde, Plater, that comes from the state. The state, um, doesn't give a break for ages, so we can't give a break for ages. We can't be less than what the state requires.
And then the rest of my comment was if the state required.
Yeah, no, I did talk to D A N R about this, like way back, um, when the original one, and they consider it because you're still doing the bedding, you're still doing laundry, you're still doing the things. And those are typically the bigger water users, dishes, laundry, things like that. For those age groups, for those people, more so than when you think of like a toilet or someone in diapers. So that was the rationale, so just so you understood the rationale.
Brittany, well, I got, do they throw in a, a garbage disposal as a just standard practice? Or do they only include it on a specific basis?
So garbage disposals, um, are required to have a twenty percent upgrade in your septic tank, and then our ordinance does require a two-compartment tank for garbage disposals.
We do, but I'm saying, does the state?
No, they require, they require, they don't look at it from a review. That is something that we look at during the install.
On a county-wide basis, thank you.
Then number three. Um, I, I just still have a, a heartburn with, um, having to mark off this nine-by-eighteen-foot pad on a lot of places, especially in the county, that are probably gonna be, you know, on a gravel driveway or potentially could be on a gravel driveway. That, that something be rewritten to just say that, you know, they have to be, there's no, you know, they have to be onsite parking, you know, something like that, where they put their vehicles in there. Cody, what's the answer?
So, uh, Cody Sack, Vermonde, Plater, it doesn't say that you actually have to mark a line nine-by-eighteen. It just says that they have to be.
Clearly designated means mark a line, doesn't it?
You could, you could put a, really, we care about the size, so if you need three, three stalls, you're twenty-seven by eighteen. So if, um, and you can put up a sign that says parking. It, it doesn't have to be the lines, there's very few in the county where we actually have that line requirement. It basically on a site map and, and where someone knows when they go there, that, that's the parking spot is what we're requiring.
So does the state exceed, um, number one, number of bedrooms in the dwelling cannot exceed five, that's state?
Yeah, cause then you get kicked into, um,
That's the limit of ten.
Yeah, like a specialty resort and different things like that.
Yeah. I'm with you, nine-by-eighteen, even in the city, is exciting to park some vehicles in them. I agree with you, Kevin.
Yeah, I, I just.
What if you just drop the designated?
Yeah, I don't know.
Isn't the size just for the building permit, purposes so that you can compute it?
We look at it from the square footage, so if you have, you know, need five parking spaces, you have enough square footage of area on your property for the five spaces. But that's typically how we look at it in most cases, that you don't have people parking on other people's properties and, and things, and most times in the county.
So when they apply a vacation home rental, do they make sure they have five parking spots in case they end up? Or is it just per bedroom? You said five bedrooms, so if they have three bedrooms, they just make sure they have three parking spots?
And they show that on their site plan when they submit for their.
What if the husband and wives all drive separately? Then you have six, see what I'm saying, I guess I'd, yeah, I would put the square footage on it.
You know, and I know that we don't consider these commercial places, but, um, just because, again, the state doesn't. Very few residences have a parking area sign on their garage. I, I just, I, I, I don't think that that, again, something as simple as saying, you know, you have to have on, off-site, off-street parking and not on the neighbor's yard. And that, that would be an owner's responsibility to say.
Anyone else on page eight, ten? I'm gonna follow through. Looks to me like six, seven, and eight are all related to the designation of who carries the Department of Health inspection report, who carries the revenue. I would like those at least, we, the Department of Health license, if you go to number eight, it says owners. You might wanna add the designee in there so that it matches what we're doing, and I agree with what we're doing on number seven. I hate to see it generate a hundred dollar review, but I don't think that's a good deal, but we're not reviewing that. If you change contact person, it would appear to me under the right situation, you should be able to hire another app, a credible contact person without generating your whole place gone into review, but that's my opinion. Anyway, let's get that to add then. Can you do that, use designee by that or agent or something so that it's, or do you think the state will allow that on that?
Um, I think the reason it was added under the Department of Revenue was because a lot of people use third-party, VRBO, HomeAway, things like that, and those are the actual, they pay you the taxes. So they would be their designee instead of the individual owners. Cause right now, even though the owners are, are working through those agencies, we still require them to get a Department of Revenue license, even though they don't file the sales tax requirements, the actual, um, listing company does.
Some of the people that nationally list them actually file the sales tax under their guidance too. So I do think we've gotta expand that, but I just wondered, we can't do the same, you don't think, to those licenses, the health license, so that the operator or, um, if they're a full-time operator like Black Hills, whatever, that they can hold the.
I think it's like when we do our conditional use forms, the owners are responsible for the license, not their designees. It's the owners that are responsible for the licensing and the inspections and things. Not a designee where, under the Department of Revenue, like I said, because they use third-party agencies that may pay that sales tax license for them.
Would we prefer to leave it like it is in the new one?
I would.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? That would be the end of page eight of eleven. You wanna move on? To nine to ten?
Okay.
Nine to ten.
It's been brought up before, uh, what about putting their certificate or their license number in ads? When if they advertise in the paper, they would have to show their license number. I know some places do things like this, I don't know if it would work or not.
I think each online.
Do we issue them a license number or do we just issue them a license?
And be a licensed number.
There will be a number.
Number, yeah.
I think each online service does it differently as far as putting in a nu- number or anything. Some of them don't have a spot for that, and other ones do. And I'm not sure if that's that important, you know, if we've got Department of Health, Department of Revenue, all of those other records, you know, unless we're, and again, the policing position of believing, believing that, um, they aren't licensed. But I, I think with some of these fines that you're talking about appear that that's, again, if they don't know, they're gonna learn the hard way. That there's gotta be some requirements.
I've got your comment down, that you feel the license number should be part of the publication.
Back where I'm from in Ohio, when you have a contractor, on a Sunday paper and the contractors have their different things in there, they always have their license numbers, it is just kind of a legit deal. You know, around our house up in Hill City, we've got a bunch of vacation home rentals and bed and breakfasts that are not licensed, and they do advertise. And I guess my thinking is if they advertise, they really ought to have the license number. Makes it a little more legit, but to Kevin's point, there may not be a, a, a way to do that, I don't know.
Track them that way? Can you, can you track them that way is what you're thinking, Mike, if they have license or not? Because if they don't have a license number, then they're not licensed, meaning you could track them saying they're making a vacation home rental. Any comment to that? Meaning how are we tracking if they have license or not? Maybe that's when they advertise that they have to have a license.
So, uh, Cody Sack, Vermonde, Plater, uh, so if someone calls and says that they believe that someone's operating a vacation rental or a bed and breakfast without, um, currently it's a conditional use permit, it's, uh, very easy for us to figure out if they have a conditional use permit or not. It'll be the same with the license, we can pull up their property and their property information. If we don't see a license for a V H R in there, um, we would know that they're operating without a license. But people renting the property wouldn't, wouldn't know, um, if that's what you're referring to.
Just to throw in, the committee, when they wrote theirs, did check in, and there are a number areas, uh, localities is, I don't think there's a whole state that requires the license number be published, but there are a number of them. Anything else then? We're still on nine, ten.
I could just comment on that. I, I would be in favor of requiring a number, I think, if I thought it would somehow promote compliance.
It would.
And Mike says it would, you think? I, I would be very much in favor of it, I think it's foolish not to do anything and everything we can to, to promote compliance so that we don't have to have nasty enforcement, uh, results. But I don't know, you know, uh, when you go on Airbnb, um, I'm sure they don't have a spot for the license, but you can in your promotional portion of your vacation home rental, you can certainly insert that. And if they knew they had to put it in, everyone would do that. And I, I think it's, I think it might help promote compliance simply because people would think that maybe we're going through all of these looking for these numbers, which I think we should do actually, but we're not going to probably. But anyway, I think anything that would, and this doesn't seem very draconian to me, it's pretty simple.
I don't have a big heartburn.
Yeah.
So how, would you be able to track that way? Meaning would they be, be able, they have their license number, I'm not against it, it's a license number, and then you would track it from there instead of a C U P?
Uh, so Cody Sack, Vermonde, Plater, yeah, regardless if it was a C U P or license, we'd have it in our system. I believe what they're referring to is if someone pulled up, like they wanted to rent a property and they wanted to, and they were reviewing that property, where there's a description of what the property, what, what the amenities and everything are, if that was included, like the Pennington County license number.
C U P number or whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that would help us too, like if we were looking at the property on like VRBO or Airbnb and we saw that that person didn't have a license number, it'd be really easy to go see if they just weren't following that condition or, um, if they had one at all.
Well, make people comply a lot better, meaning if they wanna do it, they'd be able to, I would think if you could track them, then you could just start, unfortunately, the ones, or fortunately, the ones that aren't doing it and don't have a C U P under it, it's gonna be easy to track that. You know, they need to follow and then unfortunately, they're gonna get the fines and the things that are on here. So that's just making them comply.
But that would only happen on a complaint, right? Cause you guys aren't, aren't policing it.
Correct, I don't set up my computer and pull up Airbnb and look for.
I'm gonna now, though.
For properties.
I'm just kidding.
I got, I got too many things to do.
I'm gonna call the sixteen every Monday, just kidding.
Yeah, we're not watching it, but if we, when the applicant, when, when, when this is published, and particularly with new applicants or people, I shouldn't say new applicants, but new people deciding over the vacation home rental, perhaps under the table, you know, not complying, when they discover that they're required and that most, many of them have their license there, they, they might be more alert to the notion that we are somehow looking over their shoulders.
And it might help with, with basically, if you're renting a vacation home rental in Pennington County, you are licensed and there is avenues if, you know, cause maybe some places aren't as compliant or something through law.
Mike's reference to construction companies, not, you know, in a lot of places, if you don't have a license, then you think, I'm not gonna do business with that guy. And sometimes it's a very prominent advertising, uh, device in other states, I don't think it's a big deal here, but.
And that's what I mean, Jim, it, it would show compliance, meaning that in Pennington County, we, we wanna make sure you've got a C U P. If I'm gonna rent it, like if I'm just a person from out of state, they'll start looking maybe at, at that going, okay, this isn't just a person that's, you know, nilly-willy on there, and maybe that extra precaution is, and I don't know, it doesn't cost you anything, does it?
I, I would think it'd be no burden to the homeowner or the V, uh, V H R person. I, I would think it'd be no burden to the homeowner or the VHR person. And it can easily be put into the listings and so forth. I mean, it, it tries to do something without creating a great burden, and yet insisting that somehow we need to keep nibbling away at this compliance thing, because it's, otherwise, the rest of us who don't operate them are paying to help promote their businesses, and I prefer that they bear as much of the burden
Right.
as they are realizing profits and revenue, so.
And they list them, and if they don't list them, they get caught.
Yeah.
You also know the fine on that, because you have a number that says, okay,
Right.
um, we put you down.
And somebody going through who's going to list in Rapid City or in the Black Hills, and they see all these places that have numbers, and then they get to some that don't have them, the question would be, well, you know, these maybe are off the book or something, and
Well.
I, I don't know.
As hairstylists.
It wouldn't hurt to try it.
As hairstylists, we have to send in the license, and then we have to post the sales tax license and my beauty license, so that way they know I'm in compliance and I'm not just doing your hair without. So it's, it isn't a burden, because we just hang it up, or we just put it on the. So I, I see what you're saying.
Well, if I were a vacation home rental owner, I would be proud to put it out there. Because I do have it, this guy doesn't have it, but I do have it.
And we don't charge for it? Okay.
Was going to hold the comment to the end, we're going to have you up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we on ten, ten?
If we're done with nine, ten, we are.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
So Cody Sack, if I'm an opener, Brittany just showed me a, a listing from a VRBO that does show a license number for whichever one she pulled up.
Breckenridge.
Yeah, for Breckenridge, so it doesn't appear that it's an uncommon practice to put that in the description.
There are other areas, a couple of gals had several of them listed for the meetings, they had different ones and different ways they apply it. Some of them included in the, the address listing, the license number had to be there, some of them just included on any advertisement, which meant the contact person might be doing the advertising, but there was a license number, just, just throwing that in, but no, there are some that use it. We're still on nine, ten, do we want to go on to ten, ten?
Exactly.
Yeah, I agree.
Do we want to go on to ten, ten?
Sure.
Thank you.
You guys okay with ten, ten?
Ten, ten's pretty short there. Anything on ten, ten? All right, we've gone through our part of it now, I'd like to open it up to people that are in the audience, anybody who would like to come forward, please introduce yourself for the record. You can go through any one of these pages you like, we at least got our part of that done.
Yeah, Kristen Bennett here, I'm a vacation rental owner, also a member of the Rental Association, and I was just thinking about the licensing thing, and I think you're right. First of all, I don't think the consumers care one bit. They find a place, they find the price they want, they don't care if we have a license or not, but there's no reason the association couldn't encourage, as best practice, have your license, put it in your listing if you want to be, whatever, considered a member in good standing, your listing will have your license number in it, that's the kind of thing the association can help with. You know, so if there are easy things like that, that could help the department.
Or professional.
Yeah, I mean, an industry policing itself. I mean, that's what the association's for, so those kind of things that seem too nitpicky to like spend staff time handling, that's what the association's for. I have not thought that through at all, I'm just kind of putting it out there that when you spot something like this, where we can help, we will.
I, I would agree with you, you're probably right, people, it's probably not going to make a big difference. But I, I also think that the way that this number goes in should have, there should be some descriptors here. It shouldn't just be South Dakota VHR license. It should be something to the effect, approved by Pennington County License Number, blah, blah, something to that effect, so that there's some weight to it, because otherwise, the people who don't ever comply, you know, they don't suffer if you just put a South Dakota license, blah, blah, blah. You know, you need to have something that suggests approval, and, because this is what it is, and I, I don't think, and approval is protection, and that's what the idea of regulating this is, and I think customers appreciate that. And particularly, it isn't going to affect the price, I mean, the people who have complied consistently are going to continue to comply. But I, I'm trying to encourage more people to, you know, follow the law without making it too burdensome. So, yeah, that would be my one thing, though, is we don't just put a number there, we have a little, you know, county approval tag or something.
It's a VHR CUP approval.
In good standing, seal of approval.
Yeah, yeah, something like that, yeah.
And ideally, if it matched a number that the city would use too, wouldn't that be great, you know, so that it's just like.
Yeah, that, that would be a good idea.
But he is currently figuring this out too, so figuring it out together, like, maybe it's one number, they've met city, county, gold star, like, this is a listing that is, and we've started a map of rentals on our association site, so it could be that we could be, like, if you have state, you have county, you have city, we've verified, you've got all this, you're on the map. Otherwise, you're not on the map, or, you know, we haven't figured it out yet, but that is the perfect work for a state association.
What's your name again?
Kristen Bennett.
Thank you, Kristen.
You bet.
Anything else, Kristen, while you're up here, that you've?
No, that just, that just gave, just reminded me of like, when people are like, what are they even trying to do? It's like, this is what we're trying to do. Make the association, make rental owners do a better job for everyone's good, right? And so this is the kind of stuff that, it's why nonprofit status is granted to associations, to save government. That's why the IRS lets it even exist and be tax-free, to help self-regulate, and industry self-regulate. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Board is open to discussion. Do you want me to start now? I'll be quiet forever. Sometimes you guys think I make the meeting longer, but I mean. I'll.
You're good, Charlie.
Go right ahead. Well, I know, but I listened to your comments.
Do we have to make motions on those things that we, or are you just writing them down as notes?
If you want them to be official changes to go to the recommendation of the board, yes, they'll have to be a motion.
Okay, Mike, you made that suggestion.
I guess I'm not sure exactly how you'd want to put this in.
In the past, I would just say that what we've usually done is turn it over to the planning commission to rewrite the wording that's appropriate, and they feel comfortable with, and have reviewed with their legal, and then bring it back to the next meeting, that's what we've done, but that's how we did it. As far as motion, we didn't have any motion until they came up with their revised. And if we only minor revise it next time, we usually pass it and went for it, passed or denied.
So can we direct the planning department to do that?
Yes, we can make a motion to, to appropriately word for the ordinance, those items that have been brought up.
Yeah, so you'd want to make a motion to, to require a VHR CUP number on any vacation home rental in Pennington County? Be listed.
Right.
Lex?
That'd be licensed, that'd be licensed.
Lex might be able to help us with that.
I'll do my best, Alexa Waller, Pennington County State Attorney's Office, my recommendation is if there are substantive changes, a significant amount of them, the motion would be to direct the planning department to draft pursuant to the body's recommendation, and we'll bring it back to the next meeting for approval and discussion.
Okay. That'd be your motion?
Kevin, you had a couple items that you wanted to, the parking?
Let, let him make his first motion.
Okay, start off with, then, I would direct the planning department to require a license number in all advertising for vacation home rentals. With them having, they wait behind them to figure out what, what's going to be in there, and then bring it back to us, and we will approve it at that time.
With a CUP number.
Yeah, yes.
That's a CUP number.
Can I?
It'll, it'll be a license number.
Yes.
See, with, under the new ordinance, it'll be a license. So it won't be a CUP number that they record, it'll be a license number.
Okay.
License and that they have a CUP.
No, so V, conditional use permits for VHRs are, are going away, unless you have one currently. It's going to be a license, it's done through a licensing process, it'll get a licensing number, and it will be a county license is what you get.
And this would be what I'm talking about then.
Okay, and for propriety, we need a second on that.
I seconded it.
Okay, moved and seconded. In discussion, I'd like to throw in, you also talked about how they would use it, and you haven't included that in your motion, are you trying to?
Yes, and, and I'm not sure how the planning department would do it, but when it's advertised, whether it's online, or in a paper, or whatever it is, it would be on there, and according to what Jim has said, I like that, approved by Pennington County or Pennington County License Number, use Pennington County to make it look legit.
I would suggest that we add it to the motion, if you want them to develop wording that would be usable and appropriate for Pennington County ordinance.
This, I don't mean to confuse things.
We're in discussion.
But why doesn't the board just require that everybody do that? Put their license up, that it's part of this, will require that you have to put your license in any adverti, I mean, literally.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we are saying, isn't it? This is not an optional thing, this is, it's required.
It's a directive, a requirement, yes.
It's required by everybody.
Basically, your, your vacation home rental has been approved by
Yeah.
Pennington County.
But you're required to display this, because if you're not required to display it, and everybody who's not complying doesn't have any license, then you have no incentive to do that, but if you say, well, I have to do this, plus there's a lot of people, in time, it's going to be pretty obvious to people who are not complying, you know, sadly, it'll probably be more who don't comply than who do comply, but the idea is, we're trying to move in that direction, yeah.
So based on the discussion, Lex, are you get, you have everything that the planning department wants to do for a draft listing to us? Okay, that's basically what she's going to do.
However, just for discussion purposes, I want to point out, that's not in the motion, it's.
Oh, well, that was.
I'm just saying, if we need to do that, that was where I was headed with this, we need to revise the motion to read that.
Well, but, but by the same token, we're giving the, the planning department a license to kill, I mean, they're.
Write that wording, but you didn't include it in the original.
Bring it back to us.
You said issuing a light, go ahead and read the motion back, have you got it, Jerry?
I'll make a substitute, so it's a planning department draft with all the suggestions that we have made today in that draft.
And they'll bring it back to us.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That's what my original motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we got a first and a second.
Okay, the, you, the, the maker of the motion is in agreement to the amendment, you're in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
You need a second.
I made a substitute, you seconded it.
A second, a substitute, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on the substitute motion? Hearing not all in favor of the substitute motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carried. Now, we've still got the regular motion, though.
And just to clarify, this will be heard at the May thirteenth planning commission meeting?
It didn't have the same wording. Theoretically, it didn't have the same wording, but you're, you want to do away with, that was part of it?
I thought once you pass that, it's done.
Okay.
Doesn't a substitute take the place of the original motion?
Yeah, all right. Thank you. All right, let's go through here, so if we're going to do these individual motions, I'm going to go back through the pages so that we make sure we get a motion on whatever it is that we want to change. The first page, the only thing we had was, and it does not appear we need to change the wording on number three, C three, because there didn't seem to be disagreement with three, two on seven, ten. So you're all right with the wording that's on C three, Brittany?
No, it needs to be changed to unit.
To unit?
Yeah, and super similar unit.
We need to do that, then.
What, what'll it be now?
Brittany will tell you exactly how she wants it.
So it'll say, any home, cabin, or similar unit that is rented, leased, or furnished in its entirety to the public on a daily or weekly basis for more than fifteen days, that way that unit matches unit.
For apartment or condominium.
It says VHRs are allowed in units located, so that may match.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Movement second to change, and I'm going to forget the page numbers, I'll just include them in the first thing. It would be C three, we are changing first line, any home, cabin, or similar unit. Discussion. Hearing not all, appearing motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Three, two was discussed. We're leaving it as is, it looked like from the general consensus, as units located in apartments, condominiums, or multiple family dwellings, is that correct? Okay, no motion. Anyone else for page seven, ten, we had the, also somebody brought up signs.
Notice.
Signage.
Yeah, I had notice. I'll request for notice, is, sorry, is that what you were concerned about, is notice?
It would be like what we did for the CUPs to set them up. That, that was my thing. And you notify the owners within five hundred feet and all that sort of thing.
Oh, applications notice, is what you're talking about, and the signage that related to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
This property is up for whatever.
Anybody want to make a motion?
You want a review of a vacation home rental, so the neighborhood knows it's going to be vacation rental?
Well, yeah, yeah, so in other words, if Joe Doe comes in and he says, I want to vac, I want to do my home a vacation home rental, say, fine, here's a sign, stick it out in front of your house, so the neighbors know you're going to do it.
How much is a fee, like fifty bucks to do that, you guys? What is the fee?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, signs twenty-five, and then mailings is however many people have to send it to.
That isn't, that isn't hard to do. That isn't hard to do if it's in review.
No, the signs are temporary type signs that we can do, you would just have to determine whether it's, because CUPs are five hundred feet, SPUs are just abutting landowners. So there's two different, depending upon, because previously, the way that the committee had recommended this was a SPU, which are only notice to abutting landowners.
That isn't germane here anymore, is it?
Right, but you would have to decide, because we have two different standards of notice, we either do it as part of an SPU, or it's a budding landowners, or we do it as part of CUPs, which are five hundred feet. And it just makes it easier if we follow one of those standards, if we're going to do it. It's easier for Jerry, when she prepares the notices, it's easier for the public, so they know, but those are typically our two standards.
Well, the SP, the SPU will be out front anyway, so anybody in the five hundred feet driving by or otherwise are going to see it, because there's going to be a sign where it has to be some, it has to be visible, meaning to the area.
But you didn't have a sign for SPUs, I thought.
You don't have signs for SPUs.
You don't have signs, you just do it as CUPs.
Notice, you provide notice, but you don't post a sign.
Can I throw in, because under the old SPU standard, which is non-existent, you met all the requirements first, so there's no need for notice, you met every requirement, and all you did, I think they had a thing included about introducing yourself, and that was dropped.
It was just no, it's just notice to the abutting landowners.
Right, just the abutting, and the owner could accomplish that by wandering around if they wanted to.
No, they actually have to.
Yeah.
Couldn't put it as a condition of a vacation home rental?
But they could show they met it by wandering around, speaking.
Brittany, to put a sign up that costs them twenty-five dollars, we'd have the signs, or they'd have to make them, I don't, you get, you would have the signs, right? And then you'd charge them twenty-five, and make it a condition for a vacation home rental, and make it another condition, that you need to put the sign up pending your vacation home rental being approved.
But wouldn't it be the same requirement as the CUP, basically, same sort of thing?
You'd have to send notices and stuff.
Because one is a license kind of, isn't it? I mean, you know, where the CUP is kind of, well, this is a privilege, we may extend to you, but not necessarily.
Right.
So if it's, it's only to alert the neighbors so that they can agitate.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, so you could make it a condition that if you're going to do a CUP, you have to have it up before it's approved, a vacation home rental sign, at least it gives due notice and if they don't see it, it's up to them, but I wouldn't put a vacation home rental, I'd make it big enough to say VHR pending or whatever. That's, I think you're going to get more people coming in on the VHRs, which is okay, um.
Yeah.
To see if they're good or bad or ugly, but, um, at least people could say, we didn't know that happened, so.
But, you know, it kind of promote, I don't know. I think i- if somebody's come in and complied with all the standards, they shouldn't have to announce that they're doing this. Do you?
What about the neighbors?
Well, it's like if I go get a license, I don't have to go over there and ask you, would it be all right if I, uh, got a license for my pickup here? What do you think? Well, I don't know, we got a lot of cars on the street and stuff, you know, I mean, it, the, the C, the SPU or whatever it's called.
I've got it.
You see what I'm saying?
That's a good spot to stop.
Okay.
I've got way in here as the chairman, you're talking about the, the special use permit versus the conditional use permit.
Right.
That's, the special use permit is not germane when it is in regards to the, the way our new ordinances, amendment is proposed, so.
Right.
I guess I don't want that to confuse the issue. The issue is, do we have, want signs or not want signs?
Well, I say that as the most complaint is, I don't know if it, if they're, Jim's just moving next door to me and staying me, staying, at least in the place at this point, or is Jim staying for a week? Um, so it's kind of nice to know that your neighbors aren't permanent, and I'm not, uh, I'm not like, I don't like overregulation, but I also don't think it's going to be just why you're, um, applying for it, that the neighbors know you have a vacation home rental. That way, you know they're not going to be permanent neighbors, and after that, you know what's going to be happening in the neighborhood. It's not going to be leased, it's going to be vacation home rental.
But, but what, what course, recourse do you have? I mean, if you're the neigh- if you're the neighbors, what recourse do you have?
They come in.
And, uh, what you said.
So just.
Great.
Just one thing.
Can I ask you before, when you make your statement to include this, why did you folks seek fit not to put it in this time?
Um, just for a licensing, typically so, the SPU and the CUPs are very different, like you said, they're very different. They're in, um, statute, there's certain requirements. Once an SPU is approved, the statute say basically becomes a permitted use, a use by right. Um, that's kind of the preface of those. A license is just, it, it's assuming that it's a use by right already, it's just, you're, you have some extra things to, in order to conduct business, so your department of revenue, your lodging license, things like that. In other instances, what we do is we just notify abutting landowners, we do it for large-scale construction, um, things like that. The reason is, is because if there is, so, uh, someone that wants to come in, they would have to come in and they'd have to appeal to the board of adjustment. But the standard for that is you'd have to be aggrieved, so in order to be aggrieved, you would have to be abutting landowners that make, so it's just how the process has to work. So anybody can come in, um, but the standard to go in front of the board of adjustment is you have to be aggrieved, that means you have to be impacted or affected. So if we issue a license for a VHR and the abutting landowner gets a notice, does not feel that it's appropriate, they would appeal that administrative decision to the board of adjustment, and the board of adjustment would essentially approve or deny that licensing. So that's kind of the way it goes, I guess. So any administrative decision from our office is an appeal to the board of adjustment.
Okay, so even the, uh, SPU, the, the, what, what I consider to be a license can be appealed through the board of adjustment?
Correct, because it's an administrative decision.
But it's, it's rarely done, I assume.
Um, it's happened, a couple of year, they do. It just depends, but any decision.
But you're trying to just expedite the process, and that's why we did that, we went to the SPU, because it, rather than having hearings, uh.
Correct, if they met all of the requir- right, correct, if they met all of the requirements.
Right.
Um, typically, if they meet all the requirements, even for a conditional use permit in front of this board, they get approved because they meet all of the requirements. So that was the kind of reasoning for the SPU and same with the license, if they meet all of their requirements, then they can be issued a license.
Right.
Um, but that decision, administrative decision can be appealed to the board of adjustment.
Okay, well, that clarifies a little bit, I didn't know that.
Does anybody want to make a motion, we really haven't done it.
Yeah, yeah, let me say one thing here, uh, I don't know how many landowners or, or folks have come in since I've been on the commission, and they said, we moved out here, we retired, we moved out here, this is our dream home, we're going to be here till we're dead and gone, we love this place, you know, and it's like they were going to put in a motel next to them or something, and then they complained. Not that it changed anything, but I think the fact is, they had a chance to come in and voice their opinion about this thing. It wasn't that one day they woke up and found out, geez, I didn't know they did that, and this was my little place, a- and I may be all wrong, I don't know, it just seems to me that the public has to be handled a little bit with some kid gloves on this thing, but, you know, I mean, that's just my thought.
Okay, I agree with you, but I, my feeling is that those people who want to complain, they go to the board. They're represented by the board, and they, if they want to rattle the cage, that's great, I, I have more power to them, but quite frankly, I don't think we ought to be, we're, we're trying to avoid, and you're right, Mike, I think it's constructive, if people can air their complaints in a sense, but I don't know that this is the place that ought to be done. I mean, I think if it's this kind of an administrative, because this SPU thing is definitely less conditional than our conditional use permit process, it, it is, it opens, it does not open itself up to the kind of, um, argumentation and discussion and consideration, I don't think, because everything is spelled out, and you've already done the investigating.
Aren't you the final say, Jim, or not, until they, uh, they appeal your decision? Aren't they the final say on vacation home rentals?
Well, no, we're not the final say.
On a conditional use permit, they are, unless it gets appealed to circuit court. So it never goes to the board, so the.
But on the SPU thing, that, that's.
Not relevant.
Right.
We're not involved.
Right, so the, kind of, the, the SPU would still be an administrative decision, and SPU is conditioned, there's still going to be conditions, and those, a license is not conditioned, it's just a license, it's like, you met all of the criteria, here's your license. So those are kind of the three, there, there's three different processes, and what one we're looking at right now is the license, where it won't be conditioned, it's, you meet the criteria, here's your license, you've done all you need to do to operate, here's your license.
What if you don't, what if they want to appeal, they never come, vacation home rentals aren't going to come to, um, planning's department?
They wouldn't come to the planning commission, they would go to the board of adjustment, because it'd be an administrative appeal, admin- administrative decision appeal.
So that makes the signs relevant or non-relevant?
Non-relevant, really?
What I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's why, Mike, because they can appeal it.
Right, so, you know, the sign, the sign is required as part of the statutory requirements for a conditional use permit, that's where the signs come from. Um, the only other, um, ordinance that we have where a sign is required, um, we don't, they're only for CUPs, so telecommunication is considered a CUP, and mining is considered a CUP, so no other, um, requirements for a use, um, requires a sign. The only other one that we have is a notice to neighbors is for large construction projects, and those are just letters to the abutting landowners to say, hey, there's going to be a large disturbance, there's a lot of construction activity next to you, just an FYI. Um, so that's really the only notices.
Really, well, I guess what this would be, would be a notification.
Yeah.
More than anything, not, not that you're going to be able to come in and change anything, just that you know, but I guess.
Can I shorten this up by asking whether anybody's going to second Mike if he makes the motion? Have we got a second for the motion, is what I'm asking?
Well, I'm not against the sign, I just don't know how you do it, because I don't think it hurts to put a sign up, a vacation home rental sign on something that you live next door to, because like I said, it's not the same as owner occupied.
Yeah, but I was trying to shorten it up and ask whether we got a second to the motion, if we don't have, it's germane, we're not going to do anything with it.
Where would we put it at, is what I'm saying for putting the sign up, is it a condition where? Mike?
Where?
Where would you put it at?
You mean here?
On this ordinance, yeah.
Uh, it would be in your general requirements, probably.
That's where it came up.
Cody?
Uh, Cody Sack, I'm Reverend Peter, I think staff would be more, uh, willing to do, or, or more in favor of just doing notifications to abutting property owners through like letters, uh, not making them pay a twenty-five dollar fee for, for a sign, but all they'd be paying for would be the, um, mailings for those letters.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So you're saying no, no sign, but within five hundred feet, letters going out, so everybody knows.
Just to, just to abutting property owners, yeah. And, and one, one thing with those letters too, I, I was talking to Alexa, so the, the appeal to the board, they, they have a certain timeframe to do that, it's, I believe, twenty-one days, what we just looked up. So that, that notice would be, um, that, that they get that, they'd probably contact our office if they want to appeal, we would tell them that they have a certain amount of time to appeal it to the board. Uh, the reason for that is, if that vacation rental doesn't start renting for six months, they'll, their appeal, appeal period's over, and there's nothing that they can do at that point.
If you give me a sign, it's a lot quicker than doing all them damn mailings. Just saying. If I just stick a sign in there and say VHR, that's a lot easier, because everybody sees it and.
It also regulates what day it can appear, if we go to notices, if you were going to go by sometime, it would, it would also regulate what day the item could appear at its soonest in a published agenda, correct?
Correct.
The notice would be dated, where a sign, it would be difficult to know when it was posted.
The notice could be the sign.
It, it could, the one like, like Brittany was just saying, with, the one thing with the letters is the letters are, would be post-dated, the signs not, so someone could come in and say that the sign wasn't posted until this day, and then the owner could say it was posted this day, and then what day do you go by for the, the appeal, where if you have the actual.
You have to go stick it in there and have to be in there till ten days or whatever.
So we do the letters for the SPUs already, and then there's language in those letters that they send out to the abutting property owners, so.
But that's not germane again in the new ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
All I'm trying to do is pin this down so we're not beating a dead horse here, folks. We're getting outside of the realm of reviewing page seven, ten, and what I'm trying to get at is if we can't get a motion between the five of us, then we might as well just say that. Whether it's notice, and I, believe it or not, I understood you were talking, when you're talking signs, I, I guess I assumed you're also talking notice, but the truth is, we just talked, are you going to second such a motion to add that back into this? It's non-existent now.
Um, no.
Yeah. What about you, Kevin?
My two cents are that I disagree with that, um, they've gone through the licensing requirements, that they're meeting all the guidelines, um, as far as, it's the use of their property, you know, it's a property rights thing, that they can do a short-term rental if they want. Um, a, a good owner probably would tell the neighbors that, hey, I'm renting this on a short-term basis, um, but not required to, but they've meet all, met all the guidelines that we have to get a license. Whether somebody really doesn't like it or not, it's, um, you know.
Mike, I don't think you can get a motion through, is where I'm coming from.
I think you're right, so I will say, in looking at this, uh, what Cody's talking about with the notification and not a sign, would certainly take care of it for the neighbors, but.
Didn't sound like it sold.
Yep, if that's not what the.
And thank you for your input, Cody, I agree with you. Any other thing from seven, ten? We had, I have nothing else written on seven, ten that we spoke about. So we're going on to eight, ten. Kevin, you had some, uh, maximum, maximum occupancy and one on parking.
Again, the, the occupancy stuff is a state rule, so you kind of have to follow that. I would like something simplified on that maximum parking requirement, something that just said, something like, one parking spot of onsite parking is required per bedroom. When we go to, it's got to be nine feet by eighteen feet and some of that stuff, I just, I don't think that's necessary, we just have to say that you need to have parking one spot for a.
Okay, you won't, it, would there be a second to that? Because we don't have to come up with the wording right now, will we get him in?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Cody.
So I will say that that nine by eighteen parking, that comes from our actual, um, uh, so, I can't remember what section this, three, ten or three, twelve, three, ten, parking requirements for the county, that's where that comes from. So even if you got rid of it here, they'd still have to maintain it through the other section of the zoning ordinance as well.
That's fine, I would let them go through the ordinances and read that and decide if they had five parking spaces or not.
And they don't comply.
We'll, we'll, we'll do that for them too, so.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. And it has to do with some word, coming up with some wording that fits, uh, what would I say, a more equitable parking situation, correct?
Yes.
Is that a good way to put it?
I, I would be opposed to any other, any change, I think, and I, I sympathize with Kevin, uh, in a sense, but I also think we have to have, this is kind of a minimal standard, and I know the way some people operate, oh, yeah, there's a space over there, you can park your trailer there, yeah, but it's very narrow and it's, it's sloped, and, well, you know, that's our space, you know? There's no standard. I don't want that to happen, I want at least a minimal standard, and this doesn't speak to anything more about the quality of the parking or its location, other than its size and that it's designated, so that at least people know where to go. And so I would be in favor of at least this minimal thing, and like I say, Kevin, I know what you're saying and I sympathize, but this kind of detail, I think, is fundamental. And, uh, it wouldn't be for you and I, because we'd have enough sense to say, well, we can't park a trailer about, you know, out behind the barn or, um, so I think it has to be there, my feeling is.
Any other discussion on this?
You know, Charlie, out where you and I live, where, there's tons of these things, and now with the side-by-sides and all that and the trailers, people come in, they just pull up in the yards. I mean, I don't, I don't know what we're going to say here that's going to change that, and I don't know who the cops are going to come out and say, hey, you can't park on the lawn with that trailer. Uh, it's, it's just, it's what they do, so I'm not sure what you'd put in here that would change anything.
To be able to cover all the possibilities would be impossible, so we're only, it, but the, all those possibilities seldom arise. Most people come up, they pull up in their SUV and they get out, and this is, you know, that's it. And, uh, we've got all kinds of exceptions, but if we write a statute that covers all the exceptions, we will be mired in detail that will drive Kevin and I up the wall. And a lot of other.
I second for discussion, but, um, it's, it's a requirement anyway, I just wanted to see what your discussion was, so I'll probably be voting against the motion, just because.
Kevin, it's your motion, go ahead and reply, and then we're going to get a vote on it. You'd just like to see a little less.
Exactly, I, I would just, you know, even if it's in, you know, we've already got it in the ordinances that it, that's the size, it just makes it look like, man, if I don't have a nine foot by eighteen foot spot here, I'm violating what we're talking about here. It just makes it look like, man, if I don't have a nine-foot by eighteen-foot spot here, I'm violating what we're talking about here. If you say you've got to have a spot to park a vehicle per bedroom, they'll find those hundred and sixty-two feet of space.
I'll be up straight. The city, county, state all have requirements and no, they probably don't write the number on there, Kim, but they all do, but I don't think.
Sometimes the less is more and I agree. And I won't throw in, but the committee reviewed the very thing that you're talking about, Kevin. And, and um, one of the things was to make it easier for our constituents to go through an ordinance that's written on a particular thing and meet the requirements. So. Without having to hunt up another one that says it's gotta be nine by seventeen. All right. No other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
What was our motion?
Motion was to come up with wording that was more equitable in regards to the parking.
Just something, yeah, more general.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
I, I do aye.
Four, one. Against. Motion failed.
I like this guy.
All right. Mine down at the bottom was self-solved. Uh, Brittany pointed out that if we proceed with the way we had this here, it will fit the, uh, my concern about making sure that the, uh, particular things are in the right name for those that are reviewing it. Anything else from eight, ten?
Isn't that the license, planning department draft license number? Yeah, that's where that was. We voted on that already, didn't we?
We've done that, yeah.
Oh, do you mean up on top on nine, ten? Yeah, I have that down on nine, ten, but uh, we already did do something on that. I had nothing else on nine, ten. Did anybody else have anything else on nine, ten? We're over to ten, ten. Did anybody else have anything that felt commented or needs to be added for additional looksy pigeon? Okay.
I had just, just one question on that. If there's gonna be an issue, let's say that somebody got uh, their license on December twenty-fifth. Is that gonna turn somebody into just two-year license then? You know?
We did that with the um, tattoo licensing and it's just so we all stay on the same schedule. Unfortunately, it, that's just typically. So maybe like two years and a month. Worst-case scenario, or two years and a day.
And a day. Yeah. And I was looking at that, I just thought, well, yeah, that's gonna, and it's probably not the end of the world.
Here, the chair's gonna direct that if you have comments you'd like to make before we put a motion on the floor regarding the voting, that would be the appropriate time to do so, not during the voting. So if you have additional comments that you want to make about this, because we need to um, make a motion in regards to the submission from the, what, ordinance amendment, I'll get a number on that, right? I gotta go back to the front page with all the lines. Uh, twenty-four dash oh-three. So if you would like to make any comments on this prior to the motion, it would be time to do it.
I'd just make comment that I, I really support this licensing procedure. I think that this is gonna help the staff. I think it's going to make it easier for everybody involved with the whole process. And we're, we're going through and we're telling people, you know, to get your license, these are the things that you have to do. And if you don't do them, then you don't get a license. So I, I support it.
Anyone else? I've got some. And I hope you, you give some credence to the fact that I've sat on three of these things over twenty years. For starters, the committee that produced an ordinance amendment that was discarded. I think that's being nice to it. They started out with a different set of premises. They started out to review and try to develop an ordinance that worked for uh, special use permits and conditional use permits that would lower the workload of our planning department. And I think we're forgetting some of that when it was discarded. It was discarded by a two-two tie vote. Was that not correct?
No.
Was it, was it?
Couldn't have been two-two, it was three to two.
No, it was two-two.
No? Lloyd didn't vote?
So it failed?
Failed by two to two.
I thought the last one, um, Rosconnect voted. If I'm correct, Rosconnect, me and Travis discarded the, the whole thing.
I didn't, the research I did came up with two-two. So.
Rosconnect actually voted.
I could be wrong. Maybe they changed. But I'm just saying, if it was a two-two, that's a concern to me. But to start out with, I just felt like from uh, being the chair, and I know there's other members of this committee feel that way. It was like a large finger poking the eye from the Board of Commissioners about saying, they wonder why that bothers us, this appointed representatives with the hours we put in to review something that they had set the guidelines on and appointed the people. These people didn't work for us. We didn't tell them what to do. And not only did they meet with a lot of citizens and put a lot of hours in it, so did this commission. Foreign kind of week really did a lot of uh, jumping through hoops to come up with a, a, a final draft that went forward. But if we think using the states, this, this particular thing, most of this that we have here was not involved in any of the conversations from the public, from this commission or the committee. Individual items, yes. But again, we're talking about passing this and it still doesn't address special use permits that have been in uh, the system. What, this is the third year, I think, of special use permits been available. And that's what we were trying to write an ordinance so that it in fact created greater efficiency and greater use of personnel through our planning department. And we either have zoning or we don't have zoning. And there's a dang good reason why we have zoning in Pennington County. If we think the state is out, the code is gonna have our backs on a subject, forget it. We're, we're, we're barking up the wrong narrative on that. They don't, they gave us this because the Black Hills has a set of dynamics that's different, and as I pointed out last meeting, than Lake Madison and Chester, South Dakota. Totally different. We're talking about cabins that are empty during the winter, except for people that go snowmobiling. And renting those as vacation home rentals is a lot different than renting a vacation home rental in Springbrook Acres or other developments we have that have covenants, that have been, uh, what would I say? They've been greatly restricted by a court decision that said the use was the, the, the point that has to be decided about vacation home rentals, the use. That it is a domestic use. Didn't have anything to do with commercial. Most of them wrote commercial, business, all sorts of wording. But they didn't define vacation home rentals or uh, bed and breakfast, that sort of thing. But we do define those things when we look at home occupation and other ordinance uh, items that we do review. So what's wrong with looking at it at vacation home rentals? Most of this new one, and, and I don't mean to pick on the planning people here, because I know they do a, uh, they've sat through all these other things and through the years, not necessarily the specific people. And they sat through that too. So they put in a lot of time and a lot of direction too. I think this was developed because of the vote and the unhappiness from the commission. But I want you to notice that, have you seen any of those people show up here anymore? That were on that committee? I think they all threw their hands in here. I think it's disappointing beyond belief for me sitting on here what, what we were asked to do and review this. So, and what I was pointing out and then I'm done. There's an old television show. And I told about, and I don't think you're old enough, Deb, to, to remember, it's the Andy Griffith Show, Andy Williams Show. And he was a singer. And he had a bear wandered around in there that asked for cookies from everybody and they had to come up with the same line and it said, not now, not ever, never. And that's the way I feel about this. This is ridiculous to have put this committee, and there's two of them missing that felt, that I was gonna tease them about that they're, it's almost like they're absent on purpose just not to be here. This is, this is just not good for ours. And we're the ones that do it. The planning commission is the one that does the special use permits and the conditional use permits, not the Board of Commissioners. I'm done.
So Charlie, I appreciate all the work that was put into it, but I also thought that we'd come up with some of the same results just because, number one, the work learned from the planning department, if you look at that ordinance that you guys went through with the um, citizens, um, that actually put a workload on the people in that planning department that was, they couldn't um, enforce. That was the word.
The county didn't want to enforce or they couldn't enforce?
That they couldn't enforce. They needed to hire more people in order to enforce the ordinance that you had come up with.
It also could have been a part-time person and they tried to increase the fees to do those things.
Charlie, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay. So it also was vetted through the public. It vetted through uh, the V H R people. And again, the word was overregulated. I, I listened to what your recommending body was. I listened to the public. And it goes through us over and over with emails and process and watching the planning commission and seeing what's going on. So I appreciated hours put into it, but again, I've also been through the vacation home rental stuff over and over again in the last ten years as a commissioner. And uh, I, I didn't get, it was based on complaint-based. We did not have that many complaints. I asked the planning department. So why would you start regulating more with not as many complaints on, on ordinance? That's not how government or process works. If it's complaint-based and the ordinance needs to be changed because of all the complaints and all the issues with it, um, change it. So I kept saying from, I'll, I'll be up straight from the beginning of the committee to the end. Why are we forming a committee on something that hasn't had that many complaints? Because some thought we needed to go through it because maybe their area was, had a lot of them? I don't know. But I'll, I'll say it, I wasn't one in favor of having the process do what it did. Because we are the last people that have to ordinance that and then tell people, why'd you ordinance? Well, we had a few complaints. Now we have a lot more. Now we're gonna overregulate it. I, I couldn't, in full disclosure, agree with that. And then when I'm listening to the planning department, they have to hire more people just to vet a process on um, overregulation on some of this stuff. You couldn't regulate it even through the planning department. So what citizens want, I, I'm listening to a, a committee, but um, common sense of the whole ordinance, um, Charlie, if you're talking about the work done on it, I like being on boards. They don't always uh, agree with me. They don't always agree with what comes up from those boards, but it's a process in which if they wanted to vet, I wasn't gonna stop it either. But I wasn't even gonna agree with saying, okay, um, because you guys went through, uh, citizens went through this, I agree with you. And because planning commission, you went through this, I should agree with you. Um, that's, I agree with, I start looking at all aspects of everything of it. That's me personally, not the board. And that's what I came up with. It was overregulated. There's some really good things that came out of it. And there's some things that, there's no way my board or my planning department um, can uh, function doing what you guys put on there. So you had great suggestions, but you don't have a team of people that can enforce it. So why would I, why would I put all those overregulated things in there if we couldn't enforce them? Charlie, we never discount what this board does. Um, we don't always agree, but I'll say most of the time, we do. So um, in this case, it was one of those things that we didn't. So um.
Can I just reply on two things?
Right.
The committee was weighted to the side of the operator. And these operators, you can't imagine what they went through in reviewing the organization and how to approach this. And the special, again, special use permit, what Jennifer was talking about versus the conditional use permit. Also, you say complaints? Complaints have stopped here. They've stopped here because the last three, four years, the conditional use permit stops here and we have a certain process we go through for that. It doesn't go to you. You didn't hear complaints. But complaints from these members of handling them under conditional use permit or the planners themselves, the planners had a number of complaints as well as some of those operators that helped write that draft that got disregarded.
Well, I asked complaints based by planning commission, planning department, and we didn't have that many complaints. I'm sorry, Charlie, but that, that was the word. Based on one, a whole ordinance change, it wasn't enough to change it. And I, and I believe it because I was watching and I do watch your planning department or your planning commissions and you still didn't have enough. We had complaints, but we didn't have enough um, to change a whole ordinance over. I'm sorry, you're gonna have complaints. We have it on everything, Charlie. But you didn't have enough on that, on that vacation home rental ordinance to change a whole ordinance into something else.
A lot of citizens show up on this matter and always have.
Well, we have them on all of them, but in general, for all the ones that you have for vacation home rentals that have passed through, it was minimal. Sorry. But based on how many vacation home rentals we have and, and how many complaint-based.
But again, that we passed through years ago, haven't been coming there recently.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's why you didn't hear any complaints of what's going on recently.
Well, recently and just when we had changed it the first time.
I was just saying they're not going up to you. You're not hearing those complaints.
But I watched those complaints and then um, I listened to my planning department based on those of how many, how many we run through the planning department and how many complaint base they runs. That makes me want to change something if it's, it's got enough that people are just like, these suck. We, you guys need to do something about them. Um, because we change it, we want to overregulate it. It has to be based on all those complaints of based before. And were those complaints based on all those changes? That's what I looked at too. Were the, were the, were the complaints based on all the changes that we started overregulating? They weren't. Right, but they weren't. That's why we're changing.
All I could counter that through is sitting through these committees and those owner-operators that were in there, uh, as well as those that oppose it, just didn't voice anything like that. They, the owner-operators wanted greater uh, what would I call it? Accountability, transparency from these other operators that don't care. Right now, I, I think we've got a responsibility to see if our ordinances are enforced and we're not doing very good on this one.
Well, here, here's your end result, Charlie. If it doesn't work, the planning department's gonna come back and say, that license that Mike just said, I think is gonna be huge. I think some of the stuff on there uh, that we put on there for license fees and different stuff, I think those were the most um, are, are the biggest things for changes. You're not gonna be able to go and look and um, we're gonna have Cody go, hey, is there six people there? Is there ten? Let's see, is there a baby in there? I mean, some of that stuff, guys, they're not, they're not gonna be doing. It's not our job description, basically, as planners to do that. So what I'm saying is if it's not in their job description on certain things, they're not gonna be able to do it. I mean, because you don't have enough staff, because it's not like they don't have anything else to do but go find vacation home rental people that aren't complying. If it's, if it comes to you guys, that's what it does. So. And I appreciate it. And I did appreciate, and I like boards and I like discussion.
We didn't give special use permits a chance. I guarantee you, we didn't. To help those folks, we didn't give it. And we would look better when we're administering, when everybody meets the guidelines that's given, spoke on. I think that's very important, that people don't have to go through a quagmire to meet the guidelines. And if they do, they should get their license.
And we'll see through the new ordinance how that works, Charlie.
I hope.
And it will say by what it's, by how it's regulated and what comes in from now.
Or not using the special permit process that the state. I just, we either have zoning or we don't. It's that simple. Or why do we have a planning commission?
I respect your opinion, sir, but don't agree.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yeah. My favorite section of this, um, the whole thing is section eight. I have always been from day one that the ones that are messing things up are the ones that need to pay the price, that need to not have their license that um, and I, I hope that complaints come in from those that aren't doing that. I, I know that there are many, many very good vacation home rental owners out there that will continue to be a very good owner. Um, they'll keep their place up. They will manage their guests and, and you won't hear anything from them. It's that handful that you get the neighborhood complaints or you get um, that they're doing something. Those are the ones that need to fall under section eight and lose that license. And I hope.
Realized you just said section eight.
Yeah, section eight. When I say section eight, section.
That's a cute one.
Section eight, section eight, section eight.
Thanks, Gary.
Yeah, um, that, that we've got grounds to be able to remove those with complaints. Um, and if they're a, a serious violator of um, the rules, then hopefully things get changed there. But I, that's my favorite portion of this whole thing is that we need to get the bad ones out of there. That's my two cents.
Uh, I, I want to agree with Kevin. At least to a point. I think the sad thing though is that we don't have very complete compliance, very little compliance. The reality is the good actors, they are the good actors, the ones that, that show up and are advertised and the ones that come in here and talk, those are the good actors and, and they do a marvelous job. And most of them can operate without regulation and still satisfy. The reality is though, that we have an obligation to protect. The reality is though, that we have an obligation to protect the consumer from those who don't, and there are some who don't. And so we have to have this, this, this process, but I, I do think that the, the lack of compliance frustrates me because, you know, I've never been a person who ranted about how many taxes I paid and all that stuff. But it irritates me that so many of these people are getting away with coming into compliance and they are putting the, the cost of regulation and, um, you know, some kind of enforcement process on those who step up and do the right thing. But in reality, you know, that's the way life is in the sense we're never gonna find perfection. And that's why I think Charlie is, uh, 'cause we sat here and we can write the perfect ordinance. You know, I mean, in terms of an administrative goal and result. But then you have to persuade people in the greater community that this is good for them. And that's, that's what the board has to do, and that's a lot tougher. I mean, and so, uh, that kind of creative tension, I think, is, in the long run, doesn't make us all happy, but it gives us a result that, um, I think's fairly decent.
Well, and, and my second favorite section is F, the penalties. You know, if, if, I think word will get out pretty fast. Um, if we start imposing a couple of those fines on people, the word, the buzz will say, "Man, you better either comply or get out of the business."
Right. But the high fees retard people from then complying, you know, that's one of the frustrations.
Till they have to pay them once.
Yeah. So, but then you, some way we have to have a regulatory scheme that will work, you know, and it's never gonna be as good as we want it, I know, but.
As a, as a, just a general comment though, we do have taxes and most people don't agree with the taxes, but they're enforced.
Yeah.
There's a lot of difference in when you think about ordinances. And that's a state-level thing, and again, but we don't count on the state to enforce it, we enforce it here locally.
So do you think, Mike?
Anyway, all right. Any other discussion before we vote?
The only thing I'll say is, sitting through all the special meetings and everything, when we got done, needless to say, things were a little confusing. When we received this, the draft copy, I think a month or so ago, and Britt gave it to us, I couldn't believe how it had been neutered. It just surprised me, that's all. So the reality is, this may be the way to go. Uh, I don't like it, I think there were like quiet times, there were a lot of other things that should have been included, we had in the old one. I like the special use permits. Bernard in here, I will vote no on this when it comes down to it.
Any other comments before we vote, skip the time? Any other discussion? You need a motion?
I'll move approval of this with the proposed changes that we just addressed that the office will.
With the additional motions that need to be addressed the next meeting.
Yep.
You would like to move it forward?
Yep.
Second.
Moved in second to, uh, I already lost my number, oh, I got it right here. Move forward, uh, for review and it would be for next meeting, um,
OA twenty-four oh-three?
Huh?
Oh, is it OA twenty-four oh-three?
Yes, that's, I just was looking down my list, I had switched over to try to keep ahead of you guys. Uh, ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash oh-three, uh, as submitted in our agenda, uh, for this meeting. Discussion.
This is to move forward?
To the next week, we're gonna move it forward to next week with those comments, and then the motions will be reviewed at that time to include or not include, I guess, they could be, or changed or revised. And then we would vote on it again.
So we're not actually approving this, we're just approving it to move forward?
Correct. Well, yeah, it's like a first reading, yes. I guess, that's a, that's a good point.
I'm against this, however, if we're going to move it forward, I.
I would say you'd have to vote on it based upon the.
See next time what it's like.
So to clarify, are, you're just making a motion to approve what's.
What we did not change.
And that's going to the May thirteenth planning commission meeting?
Yes, that's a better way to put it, thank you, jury.
There you go.
Is that similar to what you, we are now voting to approve what we did not do a motion on that will be reviewed for inclusion at the next meeting?
Right, and then at that time, we will vote yea or nay on that, the whole.
Again, on the whole item.
Yeah, okay, good, and then I would be for that, yes.
Okay, just any other discussion? Everybody comfortable with that motion then? All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Do we have fifteen on here? Brittany?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director, item number fifteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero-four to amend section five eleven fees of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, and so the proposed, the existing text is the vacation home rental permit review fee of a hundred dollars, that's under section Q, and it would be to change it to the vacation home rental license fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero-four.
No approval.
Second, is there a second?
Got second.
Moved in second to approve OA two-four dash zero-four, which is regards to fees. Discussion.
We should continue this one till the next meeting, 'cause, 'cause it should go along with the ordinance.
With the prior one.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, you'd like to have the same approval date on, I have no problem with that.
Okay, I'll change my motion to continue to May thirteenth?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in second to continue this to the May thirteenth, the chair won't be here on May thirteenth, but that's all right with me. All right, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we do not need an executive session, no, we actually need.
Oh, no, we still have.
We have a couple things left.
I'll read quickly.
Go ahead, one.
Item seventeen is the county board report, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the April eighth, twenty twenty-four planning commission meeting.
Okay, questions for Brittany? We have no public left?
No.
Items from the staff?
We have none.
Items from the membership? Sure we shouldn't, you know, we can make sure that I am here, we can move this to one more meeting. I don't think anybody wants me here for this.
You're just fine, your opinion counts.
Well, interestingly enough, before we put that as an item from the membership, the other time that I wasn't here over that same, I've been going to the same auction for twenty years, there was a significant vote that was done that would have gone, I was not very supportive of. Uh, and, and you're aware of that one too. We won't bring it up, but I wasn't here.
I remember, but.
Number of years back, just when I first got back on the planning commission. Anyway, is, hearing no other discussion, um, um, chair address a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved in second to adjourn, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.